Good evening, everyone. I would like to call our regular school committee meeting to order on Wednesday, January 26, 2022, at 7:02 PM. Please note, we are recording this meeting in addition to being on Zoom. We are also live streaming on the YouTube channel. Please rise and join us for the closing.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to introduce our school committee members and admin and attendants. On my left, I have Dr. Kielandowski, Mr. Michael Dolan. On my right, I have Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, Vice Chair. This is Conrad LaVerentio, Mr. Rich Flores, and Mr. Kevin Marra, School Committee members. We also have in the room with us Mrs. Judy McDoobal, our Reporting Secretary, and Mr. Michael Schatz, our IT Director. On Zoom, we have many of our administration. We have Superintendent Derek Swenson, as well as many of our administration. We also have Mr. Timothy Fitzgibbons, our School Committee Member at Gales Room, as well. First, on our agenda, we have public comments. The School Committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending our meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and share compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with a speaker or one another in deliberation on comments presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. To reiterate, this is a time for the members of the public to voice comments and concerns regarding agenda items, and the committee is not able to respond in any way at that time. If you'd like a personal response, please feel free to email the committee or Mr. Swenson directly following the meeting. The Chair will now open up public comment for a period of 12 minutes. Her policy, BETH, and ask anyone that wishes to speak to please put on your camera if possible, raise your hand via the Zoom function, and will be unmuted by Mr. Schatz. Please provide your name and address and keep your comments limited to three minutes. All right, Mr. Schatz, please let me know. I cannot see that far, so.
I do not have anyone raising their hand.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Please raise your hand via the Zoom function. Again, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand via the Zoom function, or we will move on to the agenda. There is another public comment period at the very end of the agenda as well. Is there anyone, Mr. Schatz?
There is, there is not.
It is 7:05, and I'm going to close public comment for this period right now. All right, under correspondence and recognition. Regarding VR community correspondence, we received numerous emails since our last school committee meeting in December from Bridgewater and Rainham parents, as well as community representatives, such as Chief Lucivida and Representative Demilia in support of Mr. Swenson as we go into the discussion of the renewal of the superintendent contract. Additionally, we received emails from parents requesting updates on staffing shortages following the December break, continued masking, and the status of the Arts Review Program. We also received many public persons requests, which have been responded to by myself, our Legal Counsel Attorney Emerson, and/or our Reporting Secretary, Mrs. McDoobal, as well. Mr. Swenson has an update regarding Excel Graduation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, last week, we were able, on January 13th, to have our winter Excel graduation. We have two ceremonies per year, one in the winter and one in the spring. And the Excel Program, for people who may not know, is an alternative program for students, not only from the towns of Bridgewater and Rainham, but from neighboring communities that pay a tuition, or used to pay tuition to attend our program. This program, over the time, has saved hundreds of students who were not able to make it in the general program, either at Bridgewater or Rainham Regional High School or their area high schools. I can't say enough about Dean Cosconi, who was the Director of that program, and his incredible staff for all that they do in order to provide these students a second opportunity at gaining their high school diploma. It was so, every year, it's so wonderful to see the parents and the families so excited to see their children receive their diplomas, simply because they know the struggles that they have encountered. And I often share that when I was an Assistant Principal, I used to have a sign on my desk that stated, "The greatest gift you can give someone is a second chance." And this is what this opportunity does. So can't say enough about those folks and the support of the School Committee for this program, Ms. Watson and her team, what they do at the high school in support of this program, and all of the students involved. Congratulations to all of you. And thank you to the School Committee members that did attend that evening. And I would say that I encourage folks to please attend our spring ceremony because it really truly is inspiring to see what these students have gone through and overcome. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to recognize those students in the program.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. And I would like to thank Dr. Kielandowski. She attended and said it was important to have the School Committee. They had a problem. So, thank you to her for doing that and for the members that were able to attend. And this concludes correspondence and recognition. Under consent agenda, we have approval of minutes dated December 15, 2021, acceptance of a gift in the amount of $5,000 from Amazon to the TJ Squared program, as well as approval of general ledger warrants dated December 16, 2021, December 30, 2021, and January 13, 2022. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Swenson, can you just give one or two words about the Amazon gift that we received?
Yes, first of all, thank you, Madam Chair, for putting this in the consent agenda. This is a very generous gift from Amazon for our TJ Squared Robotics Program at the high school. This Caleb, who is the head of TJ Squared, has been in correspondence with Amazon over the course of the last year or so, and they're very graciously donating $5,000 to help our students within the TJ Squared program that they'll be able to use for the planning purposes and competitions that are going to come up relatively soon. So, thank you to Amazon for that.
That's amazing. This calls for a roll call vote, as we do have one member on the roll today. Mrs. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Florence?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mr. Marra?
Aye.
Dr. Kielandowski?
Aye.
And the Chair will side motion passed. Under educational reports, we have the VR Student Advisory Council with Mrs. Holbrook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we'll be hearing from our wonderful Student Advisory Board. So, sit back and be prepared to be wowed by all the fun events that are going on in the high school. And first, we'll begin with Ian's report.
Hey, good evening. My name is Ian Farrell, and tonight I will be talking about our School Decker Club. So, on January 5th and 6th, the School Decker Club had their district competition at the Mansfield Holiday Inn. During this event, students prepared thorough answers and solutions for simulated business-related scenarios having to do with real-world issues faced in the world of being a business owner or salesperson. Each student had to present their case in a formal manner to a judge, who would rate them on overall performance and creativity. Only a select few students in each event would make it to the next competition held in Boston. I'm proud to say that this year, we had 11 students from our school make it to the state-level competition. These students were Taylor Escadero, Ian Farrell, myself, Emily Long, John Coyle, Alexandra Reed, Diane Ferrera, Selena Georgikopoulos, Leila Dusty, Cassidy Flanders, Lexi White, and Andrea McNally. Overall, this was a very exciting and impactful experience, and I am very happy with our performance. So, next up is Taylor Escadero.
I'm sorry, what's the student?
Taylor Escadero.
Oh, hi. Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute myself at first. Hi, everyone. So, today I'm going to be talking about the National Honor Society Tutoring Committee. Recently, we have started a new peer tutoring program to aid students in need of some extra help. All teachers have been asked to reach out to students who feel that peer tutoring would benefit their academic careers. Interested students can notify teachers of their availability in the subject matter they need to help the most in. Teachers then reach out to the Tutoring Committee Advisor, myself, to pair them with an NHS student who shares the same study block and subject specialty. This program has been working spectacularly in helping many students who are behind due to the pandemic or who just need a little extra help. Additionally, peer tutors are rewarded for their efforts with community service hours and educational experience. We hope to keep the peer tutoring program going for years to come, impacting the VR community along the way. And next up is Katie Reese.
Hello, everyone. I'm Katie Reese. And today I'm going to be talking about the Valentine's Day Carnation Sale. The class of 2025 is going to be holding a Valentine's Day Carnation Sale, starting on February 1st and running through February 11. Carnations will be available for all students to purchase for $1 during their lunch block in the cafeteria. Students are encouraged to buy carnations and attach a note to their intended recipients. The flowers will be delivered to the recipients on Valentine's Day, February 14. This fundraiser is a great way for students to show their appreciation for their Valentines, friends, classmates, teachers, and/or staff members, but also help to raise money for the class of 2025. Next up is Rohan.
Hi, everyone. Thank you guys so much. And thank you, Katie, for passing along to me. Before I begin, I would just also like to say, as a TJ Squared member, that $5,000 from Amazon will help us develop the robot and go through our different competitions. So, I would just like to say an extended thank you to them. And tonight, I will be talking about the Talent Show at VR, as well as the Community Outreach Club's Animal Shelter Drive. First, the Talent Show. Next month, the junior class, the class of 2023, will be hosting a Talent Show on February 11. Auditions have already began for students that have wished to be a part of the show. And show, in the show, the school there will have various talents that they will present. Everyone is encouraged to attend the show on February 11th at 6:30 PM to cheer on their peers and students. The show will be held in the BRHS auditorium. For more information, check out the BRHS main website, and all the proceeds will go to the class of 2023 for junior prom and for other events. Now, for the Community Outreach Club, Animal Shelter Drive. The Community Outreach Club is a new club at BR that started this school year, and its main focus is having students help give back to their community through various different projects. One of the projects that they're currently working on is a food and pet supply drive. All the donations and supplies and food from the Animal Care Drive is being donated to the Animal Protection Center of Southern Massachusetts in Brockton to help provide the animals in the shelter with everything they need and more. Students and staff can find posters around the school showing the items that are needed, which include, but are not limited to, food, toys, cleaning and office supplies, treats, new blankets, animal beds. Students or faculty who want to donate supplies can leave the items right outside the guidance office store. Thank you so much. And now, on to Dani Chaffs.
Good evening. My name's Dani Chaffs, and I'm just going to give you a quick Drama Club update. The BRHS Drama Club held their first event of the year in mid-December. The talented participated, participants performed Beyoncé logs, songs turned into monologues. There was even a special performance from Drama Club leaders Mr. Rigo and Mr. Child of Hakuna Matata. This spring, the Drama Club will be performing "The Unbearable Lightness of Being Teen." They are excited to perform this play that has sadly been in the making for three years because of the pandemic. We look forward to bringing you more information about their next show and future events as information becomes available. This concludes our January report. We look forward to presenting to all of you in February. Thank you.
And thank you to Ian, Taylor, Katie, Rohan, and Dani for showcasing all the wonderful events at the high school. And a huge thank you to Ms. McCord for leading that charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holbrook, and thank you to the Student Advisory Council as well. Next, on the agenda, we have Director of Student Services, Mr. Powers Overlook.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Committee, Superintendent Swenson. Definitely a tough act to follow our student reporters to do such a wonderful job, but I'll give it a shot. This is my seventh year here in Bridgewater, Rainham. I was previously a Special Education Administrator and am now the Director of Student Services. Prior to that, I, my experience in teaching was at the middle school level in a small group, substantially separate classroom. Called those the good old days. I miss being back in the classroom with, with the students. But since then, I've been a Special Education Administrator in Middleborough, Needham, and then except Collaborative. So, you know, have been able to, you know, be a lot of places, and I'm, you know, definitely very proud to be here in VR, you know, especially, you know, for this, you know, for this amount of time. And, you know, really get to know the district and know, you know, you know, some of the community members and, you know, and really see the fruits of our, of our collective efforts. I'm very fortunate to work with a talented Special Education Administrator team within the Office of Student Services, Dina Maderos, Caitlin Morelli, and a new addition to the team, Christine Robertson. And then additionally, Sarah Moore, our Coordinator of Family and Student Supports. And that's really our core team, you know, that oversees all the services for students with disabilities across the district. The real heroes, though, I have to say, are our Special Education Secretaries, who keep us all in line, mostly me. And I really know the backbone of the department and, you know, and making sure that, you know, we, you know, keep in line with our procedural responsibilities as well. But aside from that core Special Education Leadership Team, one thing that I've seen in my time here at BR is, as a central office team, we've very much moved away from operating in silos. And I'm very proud of the fact that, you know, between our central office team members under the leadership of Mr. Swenson and Mr. Powers, that, you know, we're collaborating so much more and aligning purposes within, you know, under our student success plan, so much more, you know, from, you know, me having a conversation with Ms. Joyce, our STEM Curriculum Coordinator, about, you know, sharing, you know, a revival of our co-teaching, you know, process and leading PD around that, you know, to working with Ms. Barrios around, you know, our DEI committee that's gaining momentum and going to be in full swing with the corresponding subcommittees as well. So, there's been so much more connection and, you know, so much more, you know, working together and collaborating on, you know, on some, you know, really important work for, for our students that I've seen in the time that I've been here, and I really appreciate that about Bridgewater, Rainham. I have to say that one of the best aspects of my role, aside from overseeing, like I said, Special Education 504 and clinical and related services here in the district, is that I also serve as the Principal of the Therapeutic Day School here in Bridgewater, Rainham, which is a small school that operates at the middle school and high school level and serves students who have significant social and emotional needs. And it's those students that I really get to develop a day-to-day connection with and, and a strong relationship with. And it's by far the, the high point of my, you know, of my, you know, my week, you know, is always something from, from that classroom. Many of you, as members of the School Committee, have come to our graduation each year and been very supportive of that program. And that's really, you know, where my, my heart is in my current role. Another, you know, really important, you know, team that I work with is our Special Education Parent Advisory Council Board. We have two co-presidents this year, Jessica Maguire and Rebecca Green. And they really helped to, you know, keep a pulse on, you know, parents' perspectives within the district, you know, as related to Special Education, and helped to inform, you know, what myself and the Special Education Administrator team, you know, do and how we're able to be responsive to families. We also have some really great presentations that we put on over the course of the year, which I would love to put in a plug for. So far this year, we've done a who's who in Special Education, more of an introductory, you know, meeting. So, you know, district-wide, people can get to know, you know, who the supports are in each of the buildings. We've done a basic rights in Special Education presentation, and also of what parents need to know about bullying presentation. And on the horizon, a sneak peek, Ms. Maderos is going to be leading a school avoidance presentation, so families can help with, you know, students who are reluctant or having difficulty to attend school and provide a lot of information about that. So, some really rich topics and, you know, wonderful topics that we're able to, you know, to share with families. I, I think that, you know, in reflecting prior to tonight about what I feel is our biggest accomplishment as a district relative to Special Education, and something that I spoke with our entire admin team about and highlighted for our admin team at admin retreat in the beginning of the school year is that our number of students who attend out-of-district programs, so public day, private day, or residential programs is, has been reduced significantly over, over the past, you know, you know, a decade or so, just charting that, that history, meaning that more of our students are in their homeschools, in their public schools, in VR, you know, where they belong. Our out-of-district student number was up around 65 students in FY16. And as a snapshot, snapshot on September 1st was down to only 36 students. And we have had a little bit of movement since then, but for a district this size, you know, to have a as low a number of students who are attending out-of-district programs is just remarkable. And the reason I, you know, I brought that up at admin councils, because we all share in that, in that success. You know, it's our building principals who coach their staff and are present in those substantially separate classrooms where our most needy, needy students are, you know, are supported and day-to-day, just so supportive of those programs. And frankly, you know, the support that, you know, you as a school committee provide for us to be able to keep those programs in district and keep our students in their inclusive public school settings where, where they deserve to be. So, thank you all for, you know, for that success, and I hope you take pride in that and share in that success. And of course, you know, under the leadership of Mr. Swenson and Mr. Powers, you know, we're able to, you know, to, you know, raise the bar for what we're able to provide our, our students here in district. And finally, I just leave with you, leave you with a little bit about myself personally. I'm, you know, a very proud new father. My daughter is 21 months old and has graduated to yelling angry gibberish at her mother and I. So, we're, we're currently enjoying that. And we all enjoy, we live in the Newport area, so we all enjoy all the fun that, that that area has to, you know, has to provide. She's grown up as a, as a beach baby. So, once again, thank you very much for inviting me here tonight so that, you know, I could share a little bit more about myself and about some of the things that I'm very proud of about being a part of BR. And, you know, I appreciate the time.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Do we have any questions? I just, Mr. Jovellus, thank you for all that you do and your staff do. Um, I have a question. I've heard some talk saying that there's potentially some reorganizing, restructuring of the special, Special Education Department classes, and I'm just curious about what that looks like or what that potentially looks like, or is that not accurate?
Sure. So, Ms. Conrad LaVerentio, do you mean specifically associated with the, the reconfiguration that we're, we're facing with our, our buildings on the Bridgewater side for this coming fall?
Yeah.
Yep. So, we're going to continue to have our programs that support students with autism spectrum disorders, intellectual disabilities, and students who have significant learning gaps on the Bridgewater side of the district as our district-wide programs. And then on the Rainham side of the district, we're going to continue to house our programs for students who require additional therapeutic supports or language-based supports. All of those culminating in, you know, in comparable programming at the, at the high school as well. So, there's not so much any changes to the tracks of programming or the types of programming that we're providing. But with the reconfiguration, we are just working to ensure that there's equity among the track of programming on the Bridgewater side of the district and ensuring that, you know, we continue to have the capacity to meet the needs of the students, given the, the changes in, in building assignments.
So, how does that affect kind of staffing and supporting the kid? Like, are their staff moving from Bridgewater to Rainham, or is that not clear yet, or understood?
We, we aren't anticipating any staff reassignments due to the reconfiguration.
Mr. Dolan?
Mr. Jovellus, you spoke about some presentations. Just a little bit more detail on those. Are those open to all parents, not just those who have students who would fall into the Special Education category?
Yes, thank you very much for asking. Of course, those, these Special Education Parent Advisory Council presentations are open to all families in the district. And I try very hard to highlight that when we send that information out in, in Mr. Swenson's Friday Blasts. But, you know, topics like bullying, topics like school avoidance. We've done topics on behavior support or, you know, how to, you know, identification of dyslexia and, and how to support students with reading difficulties in the past. These topics are things that are helpful for any family in our district. And we really would like to encourage as many families, not just families of students with disabilities, to, to attend those.
Thank you so much for being here and giving that presentation tonight. It was really appreciated.
Thank you as well.
Next, we have a presentation from our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator, Ms. Kayla Barry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Committee, and Superintendent Swenson. Mr. Jovellus, you said it was a hard, a hard act to follow with the students, but I'd argue too that it is a hard act to follow after you. I am going to be just sharing my screen with you all, and I hope I do this correctly. All right, are y'all able to see this presentation? Great. So, I am so excited to be here. This is my first time just in this space, being able to talk with you all about the work that I've been doing in the district. And of course, this position is very, very new. I've started in August and really kind of tried to hit the ground running with getting to know our community, our stakeholders in the ins and outs of our district. So, first, I'd like to share some of my initial goals coming into this year. First, was really to develop those relationships with administrators and to establish trust and familiarity with them. My second was to meaningfully connect with students and teachers to just hear their perspectives on what the DEI work in the district has looked like so far and to hear their personal experiences within the district. The third was to gain a better understanding of the overall environment in the district as well as each of the school buildings, because we know that that can range at times. And the fourth was to form meaningful relationships also with those stakeholders outside of our district. There is so many wonderful things happening in both the Rainham and Bridgewater communities and a lot of activism that's kind of been happening before I've got here. So, it's been amazing to be able to kind of get out there and get to know folks outside of the district as well. So, for my first initial goal with developing relationships with administrators, I really came in during that special week where all of us were doing our admin training. And at that meeting, I was able to kind of get to know folks really quickly. But then, my first few weeks before the students started to come into schools was really meeting with the principals and vice principals to start asking questions. I started asking, "How can I support you? How do you see me doing this work in your school building?" With this position being very new, a lot of it is learning as well. So, I was open to hearing just what they had to offer, and I knew that they had been doing training before. So, I was excited to hear from their perspectives, what they've been learning about DEI thus far. And then also asking them questions about what are things that are working? What are things that you wanted to improve on? I was happy to hear that as there was already so much work being done in the district and, and felt really grateful to be able to be a part of that. And then aside from that is really partnering and finding solutions in cart- And then aside from that is really partnering and finding solutions and cart consulting with them in matters that pertain to this work. LMP, um, has been phenomenal with training our admin and this year has really been focusing on our staff. So I've been grateful enough to be able to join those trainings that have been happening. I mean, engage with the speakers, engage with the staff members that are in those trainings to be able to answer some questions a little more directly for the district. And then just continuing to remain accessible to our administration and being able to consult on different matters, whether their personnel matters, student matters, how we message with communities, looking at things through that equity lens and engaging in, in learning back and forth really, and then how we support our students and families and staff overall. My second was to connect with students and teachers. I am a huge community builder. I came from a higher ed background where I was really entrenched in community engagement, um, and working directly with my students. So I almost miss it a little bit, being around my students all the time and having students kind of knock on my door and come in here. But I get a little bit of that in the Mitchell. Um, but the first few weeks and really all of this fall semester was spent in the schools. I spent, uh, and did a residency in each of the schools for about a week, um, where I did read-alongs, I did lesson plans for teachers that were gracious enough to give me and offer me some time in their classes, some one-on-one meetings to engage with not only staff members and teachers, but counselors as well, and group meetings. I attended some club meetings for students. I've also been able to be a part of the planning and, um, kind of getting the club started at RMS, the BU Club, which is a social justice club. And those students are phenomenal and the teachers that are working with them are great as well. I was able to sit in on lessons and we've even built different things. I've seen roller coasters built in classrooms. I've seen students engage in looking at maps, interactive maps and trying to guess where they are in the world. So it's been really nice to kind of go into the classrooms and engage with the students in their different projects that they're doing throughout the year. I've joined students for lunch, which has been really fun. And might I say, school lunches have gotten better since my days in middle school and high school. Um, I definitely had lunch with some of the students and it was a nice time for us to just engage with one another and for them to see another face and be introduced to someone new in the district. And it was also great for me to spend some times with our SROs. I personally have never, I come again from a higher ed background. So student resource officers were really, really new for me. Um, and they both were phenomenal with being able to just sit with me and talk about their position and how they've been able to really cultivate a community within the school buildings that they work in. Um, and i- it's just been a great experience, um, just to talk with them and engage with them and still go back and forth and share resources throughout the school year. The third again was understanding the overall environment. Of course, before I got here, there was a district DEI survey that went out. So I've really had the opportunity to kind of entrench myself in that data and look to see what the community really needs and, and what they want from this position. I've had regular meetings with central office staff and I've also been lucky enough to have a mentor in central office as well, who's been really helping me see the K through twelve lens, but also the district overall. And again, that, that shared learning, that being able to challenge one another and engage in, in questions and answers and have that space to feel like you're really a part of a team has been great for me in this experience so far. I've also had regular meetings with LMP, which has given me a better lens to see this district, the work that the district has done so far in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And again, continuing to attend CPT meetings, the common planning times with teachers to see what's going on in their classrooms and assisting with tasks as needed. I've been able to, uh, well, at the end of this year, go through all the seventh grades on both sides of our district to engage with them in learning, uh, on just their words and DEI initiatives also. Um, and then my fourth was form relationships with stakeholders. And I have been blown away to see all the work that goes into kind of making this school district what it is and all the volunteer work, all the advocacy work that's been done so far. I've been busy with meeting different constituents, so I've met members of Dice, BCCR, CPAC, BSU, Rave, Bridgewater, Rainham Educational Foundation Corp., Bridging Lives, and the school PTOs as well. And I will say too, um, I'll talk about this later. The school PTOs have had some great work doing, creating positions that are now called their DEI liaisons as well. So what I've noticed really was two things this, thus far. Um, this year really was for me to sit back and really get a pulse on what this community, who this community is and what they need from me mostly. So first was there needs to be more opportunities for teachers and administrators to learn and engage with DEI resources in training. We did a lot of that thanks to you all for voting for those half-days to do a lot of the DEI training that we're doing now. But this is an ongoing process. Um, and if you know that a lot of these topics are fairly new to some of our teachers or some things that they're still building on. So I want to make sure that they still have opportunity for them to continue to grow in this work. And then providing more opportunities for stakeholders to meet with me in order to continue establishing and strengthening the relationships that I've already started to form so that this work can move forward. This is definitely a labor of love. And in order to have the most impact, everyone needs to be involved and engaged in this work. So what I've done thus far, tried to keep myself busy. Um, I started a DEI database that is really in, an internal database, which has had over hundreds of DEI resources that includes videos that teachers can show in their classrooms, um, lesson plans from different areas. Um, there's also articles, there's a personal development folder there for teachers, and it's all separated by middle school, high school, and elementary school levels. Uh, and then whenever folks send me new things, I'm always eager to add to that database, so it just continues to grow. I also have curated the DEI Monthly, which has been a newsletter that anyone really could subscribe to. It's been on Derek's Friday email blast. Um, and it's also gone out to the folks that have subscribed and everyone in the district, but it's really highlighting things that are happening during each month, whether that's a special holiday or things that we should be acknowledging and then some things that maybe we can take note of and take away from. But I've really tried to provide a lot of resources for teachers and for community members to engage in this work, whether that's at home or in their classrooms. The next was the start of the DEI Advisory Committee. We did have a DEI committee before I got here, but it's almost a little revamped now. We have four layers of that committee, um, four subcommittees, which include curriculum, staff and professional development, student experiences, and, um, family and community engagement. And that is, all of the folks that make that up are students, staff, faculty, admin, families and caregivers and community members. Um, we've only had one meeting so far, but so far, so good. We, we're headed in the right direction. And then lastly, the PTO D, DEI Liaison Group. A lot of this work had, um, been already been done through members of Dice and then other members of different PTO groups that have kind of come together and seen the need to have this position in each of the PTOs. We had some really great parents kind of step up and go and talk during the PTO meetings. I've attended all of the PTO meetings just to introduce myself and the work that I ca- I do and also how I can help and partner with them in doing some of the community organizing and events that they do as well. So it's been really nice to meet with that group monthly and just catch them up, give them support and give them a space also for them to share with one another. And for my next steps, I will say that I hope to just continue again to build the DEI training ha- excuse me, happening this year. I'd like to continue working with faculty and admin to implement more space for student voices. We know that COVID and everything else in between has really hit our students hard. So it's important that we create more opportunities for their social emotional learning there and for them to engage in diversity and equity conversations related to who they are and who they understand themselves to be and also how they see and interpret the world. I also will be and have been working on a DEI website to just foster more communication and transparency with everyone. I know we've been doing a really great job, and even before I've got here, having things sent out through Friday Blast, especially with our DEI work that we've been doing really in the last few years, there's a lot of great things happening. Um, so I just want to continue doing that work and hopefully have a hub where folks can kind of connect with that work on. And then continue to engage and learn from individuals in, in outside of the district. So with that being said, I'm all done with my presentation. Um, okay, I think I'm done sharing. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Ms. Barrios. Um, I know-
Madam Chair.
Yep, one-
Madam Chair.
One moment, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Um, Ms. Barrios, thank you for giving that presentation. I know you had met with Mrs. Holbrook and I, um, maybe a month or so ago, um, just to kind of see what you were working on, what your vision was. Um, and I was really blown away by how open you were, um, how much you had already done and what your vision was. So I really appreciate what you've done so far and what your hope is for the district as well. Um, Mr. Fitzgibbons, did you have a question?
I, I don't have a question. I just want to follow up on your comment. And, um, as the DEI liaison for the school committee, thank you for appointing me to that, by the way. I appreciate that. I've been able to work with, um, Ms. Barrios very closely and, uh, you know, I, I can't say enough good things about her. She's, she's doing a great job, uh, trying to bring in a- a- all the right stuff to the district, and I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Uh, do you have questions from the committee? You know, again, thank you, Ms. Barrios, for being here and for everything that you've done so far and what are, what your vision is for the rest of this year and ongoing.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Kayla.
Um, moving on in the agenda, I will entertain actually a motion to take item C or selection changes with Ms. Watson under new business out of order. So, uh, by Mrs. Holbrook, seconded by Mr. Dolan. Uh, this would be a whole poll vote, Ms. Conrad.
Aye.
Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Aye.
Chris Warren.
Aye.
Nikki Holbrook.
Aye.
Mr. Murrah.
Aye.
Dr. Prudential.
Aye.
And the chair goes aye. Um, so Ms. Watson, you have a course selection change for us?
I do. Um, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. I am honored to be here this evening to propose the changes that we would like to make to the high school course selection booklet. These changes, if approved, would take effect for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Just to give you guys a brief summary of some of the course changes that we are looking to initiate, we would like to add a math class for seniors to take during their senior year called relatable math in the real world. This would be a college-ready class. It would count towards their four-year graduation requirement. And we're trying to listen to, to our students. So most kids will say, why do I have to learn this? This is going to be the math that they'll need in the real world. I wish I took it when I was in high school. We are looking to make a little change in our business and history department. We currently offer an economics class in our history department. We'd like to remove that and replace it with an AP microeconomics course, which would be taught in our business class. Um, we are fortunate that we have a teacher who has her master's degree in economics. And AP economics does not require a prerequisite in terms of a course. So it's not as though the kids would have to take economics first and then take AP economics. They could just take AP microeconomics. In our science department, we're looking to add back in conceptual physics. Um, that is a course that would be offered to sophomore students. Our traditional track in science would be biology, chemistry, and physics. Not all students take chemistry. We'd like to offer them conceptual physics primarily because it's also still an MCAS-tested subject area. So if students do not perform well in ninth grade on the biology MCAS, they can then take conceptual physics and they have an MCAS exam to take. As you folks know, students do have to pass one science exam prior to graduating in order to get, one science MCAS exam prior to graduating in order to obtain their high school diploma. We are looking to, um, take our earth and environmental science course and change that from tenth grade and move it up to eleventh grade. So we would have conceptual physics in tenth grade. And then for students who opt maybe not to take physics their junior year, they would have the chance to take an earth and environmental science course. Our goal, not for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, but perhaps the year after would be to offer an AP environmental science course as well. We are unfortunately looking to remove astronomy, organic chemistry, and technology and engineering. Um, two out of the three, because the student enrollment has been low over the last number of years. The technology and engineering is primarily because we no longer have a licensed teacher. Um, tech and engineering is a separate license under your science license. Science folks are specifically licensed, biology, chemistry, physics, unlike if you were licensed to teach math. You could teach any course that falls under the math umbrella. So tech and engineering, we fear unfortunately, is kind of a dying breed in terms of the teaching, the teachers that are coming into the workforce. So we're looking to flip that, um, but still offer kind of hands-on courses for, for students as well. In the English department, we are revamping the way we look at English twelve. English twelve is primarily British literature. Um, we would like to change that up a little bit. We will still focus half of the year on British literature, but on the second half, on this latter end of the, the half, we want to introduce students to more modern-day texts from around the world, diverse perspectives, diverse authors, things that are a little more relatable to the students today. And we'd like to offer a full-year elective course, um, on sports media, but it will all be done through writing. In our music department, we are looking to offer jazz band as a semester course during the school day. And last but not least, in our PE and wellness department, we took a go at it, um, for the past two years primarily because of COVID, where the students had to take a full year of PE and we merged that with a wellness health curriculum. It didn't really play out the way that we wanted it. Um, we don't really have the staffing, nor do we have the facility support to, to like educate that many students in, in such large groups. So we are looking to go back to a semester. So students would take in ninth grade, a semester of PE, and then another semester course. And in tenth grade, they would take a semester of PE and then a semester health class, which would be taught in the classroom. And those are the substantive course selection changes that we are proposing that would require a vote this evening.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Um, I will entertain a motion to accept the course selection changes that Ms. Watson outlined.
This one moves.
Mr. Murrah, do I have a second? Over. Any discussion or questions on those?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Dolan.
Ms. Watson, the relatable math for the real world, is that balancing a checkbook?
Um, yeah, I am sure that that will be, be taught. Um, because we've never taught it before, it's going to really be driven on a lot of student interest, to, to be honest. So I can see things such as banking, finance. I can see things such as, um, difference between buying and loaning cars with interest rates, compound interest, um, investing. There might be a little bit of a crossover i- in terms of what's taught with some things that might be taught in like the personal finance type course as well. But our business courses have a very strict kind of angle, more so on the, the foundation of, of the business concepts. And this would definitely be more foundational math, math skills. So students have to, this is why it's a senior course, it has to be higher than Algebra II. Or students can be taking it concurrently with their Algebra II course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate that you're trying to keep, always trying to keep the classes more relatable and student-friendly.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mrs. King. We appreciate that.
Ms. Watson, for the conceptual physics, are the students going to have enough of a back, math background by tenth grade to handle the physics part?
That is an excellent question. I'm actually glad that you brought that up. So just a point of clarification, um, and I'm going to build off of what Dr. Prudential just said. This conceptual- This conceptual physics, the reason why the title's there, it's different than physics. Physics is math-based. Conceptual physics is the concepts of physics without the math. So hence it's conceptual physics. They don't need the the math background in order to do it. It will be more concept-based foundational stuff. Students who take conceptual physics can still take physics when they get older. Physics is still a junior, senior class that will be that will be offered. And that is Algebra II, trig, higher level math.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? All right, this will be roll call. Mrs. Conrad. Mr. Dolan. Mr. Fitzgibbons. Mrs. Holbrook.
Thank you very much.
Going back to the agenda. We have the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. First, I'd like to give a report out. On the school building committee for the new Mitchell Elementary School project. It's its terminal progress report. The prod- the project is currently on time with no lost time of incidences. Drywall painting, ABVA, brick veneer installation, windows. And curtain wall installation are all ongoing. The testing and inspections of masonry, fire stopping and MEP inspections are ongoing as well. In-wall rough plumbing and electricity is in progress. Installation of our HVAC ductwork and mechanical piping continues. The gas lines have been installed over the course of the last month. Bacon continues weekly safety walks throughout with reports of uploading to Procore. And our OPM C- CHA coordinated several meetings this month for furniture, IT. And other equipment, which I will speak to a little bit later. Just some scheduling milestones on January fifth. It was the notice to proceed with substantial completion. Due for July eighth of two thousand twenty-two, yes, this summer. So it's going to be a very busy next couple of months. Getting ready for a multi-leveled move between our buildings. Which we have already started to begin planning and preparing for. Upcoming construction activities include the windows, storefront and skylights, in-wall plumbing. Priming and painting will continue, HVAC work will continue and the rough and fire protection continues as well. The next school building committee meeting, meeting number sixty-five will be on February seventh. And building committee meeting number sixty-six will be on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Just a reminder that these are all. Open meetings and open to the public with public comment. So we encourage. Individuals from the community who would like to join us and ask any questions or could make any comments at public comment, please do so. Just wanted to report out that there was an incident on the ground level of the new site. A few weeks back where they had a water main that froze overnight and water did get into the ground level. With that being said, I went down and walked the site along with Mr. Powers. In our OPM and representation from Bacon Construction. They mitigated the process rather quickly. And one thing they did have some concerns with, which we expressed our concerns with, as did Mr. Dolan. At one of our Tuesday meetings was that some water got into some boilers. That had not yet been installed, but still we still had consider some concerns about the integrity of those products. They did reach out to the manufacturer. They would not warranty those. So in turn, we are going to be getting two new boilers. To replace those units. Just so you know, all of this falls on as far as responsibility to that of Bacon. And no cost to the taxpayer. They're going to have to file an insurance claim with their their insurance folks. So it will be no added costs to the bottom line of the the project. Regarding the IT network, as we just stated, Mr. Schatz, our IT manager. Has been working with Ms. Macedo, our Director of Business Services, on purchasing orders as of now. For the interactive panels, computers, monitors and networking commu- equipment. And the order will go through the state bid list from Okers and Unified Networking. So we're getting ahead of the game there. To make sure that we have those products in place for installation timelines in the spring. Regarding furniture, we have one more final meeting before we see those. Apios released for furniture and the schedule so that we're guaranteed to have that furniture in place. For the summer move-ins. We have reached out to those individuals through our designer. And they have guaranteed storage when that equipment comes to that, furnishings come in earlier than expected. So. We're in really good shape right now down on five hundred South Street and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee may have.
I do have one question. Excuse me, Mr. Swenson, Mr. Dolan, I know you're heavily vested in the project as well. I know so far we've got a mild winter. I did hear Mr. Swenson say that they're going to be installing windows and skylights. Is the building without the windows, skylights prepared for winter weather?
That's a timely question because I just had a meeting this morning with folks from, we were doing our. For the hardware of all the doors, our key meeting. And we were looking at all of our exterior interior doors and trying to figure out who would have access to what. And throughout the course of that meeting, we started to talk about, you know, the weather that's supposedly coming in. Over the weekend. And my concern was right now they have temporary skylights in place. And I was just concerned about, you know, snow load, being able to handle that. I did express my concerns to. The OPM who was on site with us today along with a representative, a representation from the designer. They went back to Bacon Construction and spoke to them and I did get some correspondence this afternoon that I shared with Mr. Dolan. Basically stating that they were going to assess that tomorrow. And put any necessary reinforcement equipment or materials in those areas to be able to support. You know, a heavy load of snow because the snow predicted, they say it could be up to a foot, but it's going to be kind of that, you know, wet, heavy snow. So that is a concern, but it has been communicated about those concerns and they are looking into trying to do something to. Prevent any type of, you know, concerns with the temporary skylights over the weekend.
Well, I do appreciate that. As you know, my my regular employment is in the construction safety industry. So I was only, I was more concerned also of blowing snow getting into maybe finished areas of the building already. It sounds like we already had an issue with the water main break and it was being replaced. I know. Stuff like that does fall under the insurance of the contractor. But I just don't know if we have any other setbacks that will delay the July eighth opening. You know, let's try to preserve everything that's been installed so far today without any wind or water or snow blowing damage on it.
Right. So that they got, you know, obviously the the winter months are always concerning that that. During construction right now, other than the drywall on the ground level. Yeah, like we said, we they've made good progress and they've done a good job of trying to seal that envelope of the building best they can. You know, that even that situation on the ground level is not going to set the project back at all. They're just going to try to put some extra crew on on that and they're saying that that could probably be remedied within a day or two. Once they finally, you know, figure out what's what the situation is with the insurance there on their end and kind of getting that. Then in place. But we will, I'll report out on that at, you know, future meetings once. That is, that is remedied and we have a, an understanding of if there are any timeline issues. But we, I asked that question when Mr. Powers and I went to do the walkthrough when it was brought to our attention. And we were assured that it would not impact the timeline in terms of the opening.
Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, Mr. Swenson for the update and certainly appreciated. And it sounds like you're on top of the weather and everything like that, which is great. I just ask as a former son.
Mr. Fitzgibbons, you froze.
A fully packed box. So, you know, it's it's going to be, it's going to be great and thank you so much for all your efforts on it.
All right, you froze a little bit. We just caught the end of that. Mr. Swenson.
So I'll I'll move forward with our COVID nineteen update, if that's okay, Madam Chair. Okay, last stop. As of last Friday, the twenty-first, we have a total of. Two hundred ninety-eight students during that time that were deemed COVID positive. And a hundred forty-one students in our test and stay program. In regards to employees, we had thirty-four that had tested positive for COVID nineteen. And six that were participating in the test and stay program. I just wanted to state that since Monday of this week, we have had another additional sixty-five cases. Throughout the district. And when we met with our. Boards of Health last week, there was a twenty-three percent positivity rate. In the town of Rainham and a twenty-four percent positivity rate in the town of Bridgewater. Just to remind folks, we had put this out in our Friday communication a few weeks back. That Commissioner Riley has extended the mask mandate until Monday, February twenty-eighth. And that right now we are looking to enter a new testing program. I just mentioned test and stay. What we are going to start to start participating in as of the week of Monday, February seventh, two thousand twenty-two. In accordance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and Department of Public Health. Is that we're going to be participating in an at-home testing program. So we will be, we sent out information last Friday about parents and families. Who would like to opt in to this program. And basically what would happen is students will be provided. With a kit that contains two tests. And basically it's a two-week supply of of test, testing materials. And we would designate a day for students to test. Or if a student became symptomatic at home, allow parents most likely to test at that time. And and basically if the student then tests positive at home, that information would then be. Relayed to the school nurse at that, their child's site or where they attend school. This would then eliminate our test and stay program. And there will be no more close contact tracing in schools. So again, we sent that information out last Friday. We sent out another communication about that on Monday. With a, with an auto call about that. And again, we are encouraging families that would like to participate. In that program to please sign up through that. Site in that link that was sent out in Monday's communication. So I know Mr. Powers is on. I don't know if he wanted to add anything as our point person for COVID in the district.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Swenson, Madam Chair. Yes, just to provide some numbers as a follow-up to Mr. Swenson's information about the. At-home antigen testing program. We are rolling that out in two phases. The first shipment is actually in district. That is for staff. The the first shipment that came out was for staff. The second shipment that comes out is for students and that will be arriving next week. So we're actually, our intent right now is to be able to give those. Current tests that we have that that arrived this week to our staff members for next week. And then next week we'll pass out the students to start the following week. So our students will start on on Tuesday, the the eighth. We're hoping our staff, if we can get them all in hand, will be able to start next week, the beginning of next week. However, just to, in addition to, I shouldn't say however, just in addition to, to provide you some context. You know, it's it's obviously a a rolling, a rolling opt-in process. So families can opt in at any time. As of this afternoon, we asked all staff members to have their responses in and then for families. By tomorrow, just because we do need to order the student numbers by Friday. But just as of this afternoon, so this certainly isn't closed, but just to provide you those numbers. We had one thousand one hundred fifty-four students, families on behalf of their students respond. That they would opt their students into the program. The remaining were roughly, we had about a little over four hundred staff members to this point. Opted in as well. So, you know, we're very pleased with with these numbers. We're hoping that as time goes on, more and more people. More staff members, more more families on behalf of students will opt into the program. And it is a, like I said, a rolling opt-in and conversely opt-out program. So if families decide they do know, no longer want to participate, they can opt out as well. And we will also continue to do symptomatic testing as well. Really, the only thing. The only big difference from before is we're no longer doing test and stay. We will continue to do symptomatic testing at school for those individuals that. Come down to the nurse's office with symptoms. And then obviously this new at-home antigen testing program.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
And just to Mr. Swenson, just I'm I'm sorry, just a quick follow-up. I I know I shared that information with you and and Mrs. King. But obviously our numbers are are down quite a bit from the previous weeks. You know, our our DESI reporting numbers don't necessarily align with the Monday through Friday schedule. They go, actually go Thursday to Wednesday. So from last Thursday to this Wednesday, we had one hundred seven positive cases. That's an improvement from. The previous week's reporting where we had two hundred seven and then even the week prior to that, we had three hundred forty-seven, which is our peak. That was the January first through the twelfth. That was our peak that we've seen the most cases in in one week's time. Since the start of this pandemic. So hopefully that is a peak we will not revisit.
Mr. Swenson, I may have misunderstood, but if you choose to participate in this program. You're not required to just test on certain days. Are you only required to test if you're symptomatic?
No, I'm sorry, Mrs. Swenson, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Yes, Dr. Prewindowski, they're they're actually recommending that you designate days for students and staff to test on. So right now, the the day that we proposed is Tuesday. That is the, you know, you, the the families will only receive two tests. So for some reason, they, you know, feel as though they want to test on a Monday. And then use their second test that same Thursday, that same week on a Thursday. They won't be given any additional tests for the following week. So the the premise of this is to, you know, proactively test. Once a week, we have designated Tuesday. We feel after, you know, speaking with our internal team and and reaching out to some other districts. Tuesday is the best day that obviously captures the weekend prior. And then obviously allows us to capitalize the weekend, going into the weekend coming up. Using some time there for part of the quarantine process. So we're trying to, you know, cut down on the number of missed days. So we really wanted to be able to incorporate the weekends on on either end somehow. We obviously chose the the weekend afterwards, but we feel as though that by doing it on Tuesday, we may be able to catch any type of exposures. That that occurred over the weekend.
And with that being said, with what Mr. Powers is stating is that the Tuesday piece too, you know, we're we're. Research is showing that basically a lot of these transmissions are are coming from outside. You know, areas and outside of our schools. So, you know, that weekend piece is important. And, you know, they're saying with this variant, I think they're saying now, it used to be like day four or five, Mr. Powers, now with this variant. Day three and four, you can pick up on some type of conversion. So that Tuesday would give us a good. Handle on, you know, counting in that if there was a weekend exposure and to what Mr. Powers stated too. You know, during that five-day quarantine, we could incorporate the following, you know, weekend to count into that quarantining time to cut down on the amount of. You know, learning time and lost time of unlearning for our students and, you know, time in the classroom for our teachers as well.
Well, I guess my question is, so I sign up and I take my test, but I don't want to do it on Tuesday. Are you gonna come find me? Are you going to come look for me? I'm just curious, like, what's the deal with all that?
You specifically, Dr. Primandowski, yes. The general student, family and staff member, no. But where we're at, it's it, this program is completely on the honor system. So we're relying on our staff and and families to be partners in this in this program. And, you know, to convey and report their information accurately. So and and right now, the only thing that they're required to report are positive results. They don't have to check in on a weekly basis to see that they've taken their test and it's negative. They're only reaching out to us in reporting if it's positive. Again, if a family reaches out on a Wednesday to say that they're positive, that at least they've done their due diligence and let us know. We're certainly not going to say, well, why did you call us on Tuesday? We're just appreciative of the fact that they they called and let us know.
Okay, thank you.
The 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 objective here being that we're trying to limit the amount of folks that are coming into our buildings positive. So if they can proactively test at home and not send students in or staff not coming in, then we're trying to, you know, prevent and mitigate spread through those means. And that's what the objective of this is at the state level as well.
Thank you. I also want to know, I know during our Board of Health discussions, those specific rates that is from the Board of Health chairs, that's only ones that are PCR reported. That's not even reporting all of the at-home tests. So it's most likely much, much higher. Although we do, we have seen the numbers come down, but they're much higher even than are reported.
Correct, yes.
I do have one more question. That's going to be for Mr. Swenson or Mr. Powers. Because I actually had this question asked me today about this. If a family opts in for the home testing program, but does not want to test on a specific day, say Tuesday, because they are not, their child is not feeling any symptoms whatsoever, and they don't want to waste the test, will they be penalized and kicked out of the program if they decide to test when they are starting to feel symptomatic instead of non-symptomatic?
Well, they, I'm sorry. They certainly won't be, you know, penalized. Again, we're, you know, the the only reporting we're asking for them to do is really if they're positive. I I think the idea is that we are catching those that are asymptomatic. That is really kind of, you know, because we're doing away with contact tracing and and the test and state program, I think it is important that we try to, you know, capture as many as many individuals that may be positive at home before they actually come to school. And I think what we're seeing with, you know, some of our positive cases, certainly not all, is that they are asymptomatic, showing no signs of symptoms, but they just happen to test for some reason. So we're we're hoping to, again, prevent anyone from coming into school. But no, there'll be no penalty, no one will be removed from the program if a family decided to test on Monday versus Tuesday versus Wednesday. But, you know, we are asking families, in theory, not to hang on to those tests, that they should be testing proactively once a week.
Thank you.
Is there a question, Mr. Powers or Mr. Swenson? Will this impact at all kids or students who may be exposed at home or someone in their house that is positive? The student isn't positive and that quarantine are timing at all since they're now have the related test at home? If the family member is positive?
Well, I I think what you're kind of referring to is our household close contacts. If I understand you correctly, Mrs. Laberinto. So what we've been basically told by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Public Health is that that aspect of it will now be handled by the Boards of Health that really, you know, districts shouldn't be involved in, you know, an at-home positive case or an at-home, you know, quarantine due to a close contact situation. So we will actually kind of be pulling back on our guidance that we've given in the past around household close contacts and relying on our Board of Health partners to, you know, impart their wisdom on 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 this whole process and and work with families in terms of what their quarantine should actually be.
Do you mean, sorry, I just have some more questions. Like you said that, so do we really understand? You just said that we'll be pulling back on that guidance. Do we really understand when that guidance will change? Or is this conversation is happening now with the Board of Health?
So those conversations will now happen from the Board of Health to those individuals. We, you know, if we get a report of an at-home close contact, we won't be providing those families guidance. That that guidance now will come from the Board of Health. And that will be the guidance that they deem from, you know, what what they're getting from DPH down to them.
So we are pulling that guidance on our website or that guidance, that guidance policy is no longer in effect? I just, I mean, I'm assuming there's kids now or next week or whatever that are close contacts that are at home, right? They have a parent that's positive, but maybe they are tested negative. So will they be able to go to school on Monday or whatever? Do we have?
Ms. Brennan and the nurses have been working with individual families on that. So yes, I, you know, if if we run into any of those situations, I'm not aware of any recent household close contact situations. So I don't want to say that, you know, that 100% has been pulled off the table. But I I don't believe it's still in effect at this time. But I don't have a 100% accurate answer for you right now.
Do we have an idea of the number of students that are actually vaccinated this way? What percentage are on?
I I don't have that information for you this evening, no.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Mr. Swenson?
Any other questions?
I think that's it for COVID.
Okay, so I'll move on to item three. My SMART goal, as you know, we, through the long-range planning, it is, I will report out on a goal each month. And actually, next month, I believe, I'll be up for my half-year review, which I will kind of give an update to the full committee as to where I am on all my goals. But tonight, I wanted to touch base on SMART goal number three, which states throughout the school year, I will monitor and evaluate the accomplishments of the action plan of pillar number one, safe and supportive schools by develop developing safety protocols for the district to implement to protect students and staff from COVID-19. So as we just talked about a little bit here, some of the programs that we've done. But we've also continued to keep in place and monitor all required mitigation strategies that have been relayed down to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education through Commissioner Riley. We did implement the test and state program. And as we just stated, we will be exiting the test and state program and testing students that are symptomatic at schools. But we will then be implementing our at-home testing program again next week for our staff. And then the week of the 7th will be the beginning on Tuesday, February 8th, for our students. We continue to monitor and report out our weekly COVID numbers every Friday through our BRSD updates and reminders. We continue, as Mrs. King stated, and thank you, Mrs. King, for joining us on those calls. Every Thursday, we meet with representation from both towns and the Boards of Health. We talk about our internal numbers, and we also talk about community numbers and any information that they may have through the Department of Mass Department of Health that we may have through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So it's an ongoing sharing of information. We continue to, through our Friday blasts, to our stakeholders and families and staff, report out any changes in our plans and protocols and continue to communicate any DESI notifications in regards to testing. Or as I did earlier this evening, talked about the mask mandate extension by Commissioner Riley. So just basically stay in the course and doing the things that we're doing throughout the course of last year and just trying to shift gears when further information and guidance comes to us through the state. And the prime example of that with the last two, with the extensions of the mask mandate and now the at-home testing program. So it was a little bit of an update on goal number three. Happy to answer any questions?
I don't see any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just the last item underneath my report, we did want to welcome the class of 2035 children that turned five on or before August 31st, 2022, are eligible to register for kindergarten. Kindergarten registration for the 2022-2023 school year will begin on March 1st and runs through April 14th. While there are no firm deadlines, we do ask that new families register their children by April 14th, 2022, if possible. This helps us with our plan for staffing and programming more effectively and more timely. There is information up on our website, www.bridg-rain.org. And you can click on the kindergarten 2022-2023 link to learn more about the registration process. So, yeah, registrations for our incoming class of 2035 is right around the corner. If anybody has any questions in regards to that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do you have questions on that? I cannot see anything.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I have underneath my superintendent's report for this week. This month, I should say.
Next, we have Budget Subcommittee Report with Dr. Primandowski.
All right, thank you. The Budget Subcommittee met on January 10th. We just have one voting item. Mrs. Cudero suggested a formula-based model for increases to our substitutes throughout the district. A grid was enclosed in the school committee package. And the grid is based on whatever the minimum wage would be plus an increase to allow us to be competitive just around these schools. And just for an example, as you follow the grid, the, I'm gonna use just the substitute teacher currently makes $85 a day. The minimum wage has gone up. So we would like to have minimum wage plus $1.15 an hour. So that would bring it to $15.75 an hour for $102.38 a day. And then when minimum wage goes up in January of 2023, it would be that minimum wage plus $1.15. So that would bring us up to $16.15 an hour for $107.25. And the the goal of this was really that if minimum wage should ever increase, we don't have to come back and vote every time. It would be that minimum wage based on an increase. And you can see throughout the grid, we tried to make it more competitive. And if you see on the second page, she provided us quite a list of neighboring districts plus what we call the dark districts, which are those districts that may not be close to us but have the same demographics. And again, you'll see that with the section of just a few, we would then be relatively competitive for the substitutes. Therefore, motion to approve the formula-based model for FY '22 and '23 and thereafter for our substitutes in the district.
We have questions.
Madam Chair.
Sorry. One second, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Are we still on the chart and also next one, substitute teachers?
It's substitute to everybody, right, right. So do you think it's okay if a substitute ESP minimum wage? I can go to Walmart, do you want? I think the minimum, what I don't know honestly, do you allow substitute ESPs?
Based on our conversation, we don't typically do substitute ESPs. Because we didn't want to limit ourselves.
Right.
But typically, we don't substitute ESPs. That was part of the conversation with Mr. Givens.
Same with the secretaries. I don't believe that we. We don't, unless it's going to be something long-term, I don't believe that we do substitutes for any of those. We we handle it throughout the day. And why is it on here?
Because again, we didn't want to limit ourselves.
Yeah, and I think we were also still in negotiations with secretaries and custodians, which we still are. So we also wanted to put a full time on that till we finish. Right, we could use it if we needed. I I guess I'm just questioning if we needed to use it, whatever, for a bit of reason. If paying someone minimum wage, I'd use it. Is Miss Cudero on? I I don't know if we've ever had a problem filling these or again, if we even do, I don't know if she's there.
Lisa's right here. There you go, Lisa.
Hi, Derek, can you just relay the question to me? I'm having trouble with my audio.
In terms of, the question is in terms of filling the ESP positions, the substitute positions. If we've ever had issues in filling those, I know that it's kind of a rare occurrence that, you know, folks sign up to become ESP substitutes. And usually, we kind of make it more of a managerial, you know, function at the at the building level through the building admin to to make those days work when we're short.
So one of the issues is now with the, that a lot of the teachers, you know, have been absent. So the ESP in the classroom has stepped up to be the teacher in the classroom. So that's left the ESP position open. So we've just recently posted for substitute ESPs to try to backfill and help in the classroom. So we've really never, we've typically haven't had a lot of ESP subs. But with this new, with the new contract, with the collective bargaining agreement, that the ESPs can move into the teacher position, we're finding that the ESPs are taking over in the classroom. So we do need to backfill the ESP in the classroom.
So I guess the concern, though, was from Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, that the, I'm assuming the the pay rate. This Laberinto, you had concerns about that being?
Minimum wage. Positions are important people for kids that do have an ESP or, you know, that in the classroom, they're important roles and they're required under the kid's IP. And to pay someone with minimum wage, I just, I I I'm hiding the term on that.
I can appreciate your concern, but we do have the, we have to be very careful with the collective bargaining agreement and the rates that we currently offer to the ESPs that are in the actual positions.
Yeah, that was just gonna be my comment. We just renegotiated that contract. Minimum wage for step one, but that includes benefits, of course. I think that might be the issue is that if substitute, if we if we gave them too much of an increase.
It would out.
Would they would out.
Outlink what our home ESPs were, basically, in the part of the department.
What we could do is we could hold off on that, those particular ones and have more of a conversation of how much do we use them, what do we do? And then if if we post for that price, are we having a hard time filling it? Because frankly, if we don't have a hard time filling it, then that's what people choose. I'm not sure even what the qualifications are for a substitute ESP. That. Educational requirements for ESP substitutes.
I I don't disagree with you, the education requirements. I'm just saying, like, we're competing with Dunkin' Donuts at this point. Like, I don't go work at Dunkin' Donuts, Walmart, one, and be the same money or more than ESP. And how, and these are important people who are required to provide us these students IP's.
And I don't disagree with that at all, but I I think the reality is, these are substitute positions that are not not scheduled based much like you get at Dunkin' Donuts early. So these are sort of on day of, you get that call, which you can probably cover. So I would actually advocate to leave it on. And if we leave. And if we need to revisit, because my concern is if we don't have this there and Lisa posts it, is she going to be able to put a salary if we don't vote this way? That's my only, my only concern. And again, we can revisit if we're not getting.
And minimum wages for this year, for the 2023, it's up to the fifteen dollars.
Right, it was up on 2020.
Exactly.
This year is fourteen twenty-five.
Exactly. So we only have a couple of more months. So I, I'm, they were moving it as is, and then they can get their increase in 2023. So start at the minimum, and then the following year, it would be at the fifteen dollars.
And that's still minimum wage.
Minimum wage, so the.
That's true, yeah.
But I know it is a concern of the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes.
The ESP rate for the ones in district is low, so I mean, we can't start them that high. So I think that was probably because, you know.
Madam Chair, I got a question. Are we comparable to other districts with this? Because, you know, I kind of really was learning, you know, I kind of grew up, I kind of love to sort of come and watch my child in a classroom with substitutes. I didn't know if that's comparable to other districts.
Or did you, there is a sheet that tells you all the comparisons on, on, we're right up there with just about everybody else.
Again, I, maybe this is just an industry issue across the board. I think maybe it is, Smir, because the ESPs, again, are part of the Mass Teachers Association and UREA. And we negotiated, we all voted for their, their contract and their pay position, so.
I think what's happening right now in salaries, I guess, Mr. Jones probably out for Mr. Swenson, Mr. Power knows. I just wonder how many of these positions are open, ESPs, because ESPs are moving to teacher positions, or openings. Even, I just have some concerns of what you're seeing out there, reports, lies and job openings, we're seeing everywhere right now, all kinds of industries. I'm concerned with the ESP rate and even substitute rate, this, even a hundred and whatever, three dollars. And in many districts, I'm going back and adding money to their substitute rates because they are not getting substitutes because it's a little salary. Slow rate.
And again, you look at the second sheet, and you're not that. And you cannot pay a substitute. In my opinion, you cannot pay a substitute more than you pay a full-time staff.
Yeah, I mean, I think a hundred and two dollars, that makes us competitive to a lot of the districts. I know some of them, like Brockton, you know, is much higher, but it's not that much lower than you have them, especially our district.
And I, I think people have to understand that even with the increase in the substitute teachers, these people are not actually, we're not gonna go find a physics teacher or a chemistry teacher who's sitting home who wants to come in. So we're finding an adult body who is hopefully going to look at the plans of the teacher last for the five days of substitute coverage and is gonna try and maintain a classroom. We're trying to eliminate the auditorium. So if we can find some people who are just going to, you know, survive and, and, you know, hopefully, you know, monitor a classroom that we're willing to go up to that rate, and I think we need to see how it plays out. So for anyone out there, this may not eliminate the people in the auditorium because there is just nobody out there for any job, as you stated. But I think we have to start somewhere. If we can just get an adult in a classroom, that would eliminate some of the auditorium. And we're hoping that then the kids can start to do some of the homework or the work that the teachers are supposed to have, you know, provided for five days, so that we can sort of get back on track that the kids are not sitting, you know, hour after hour after hour in the auditorium. And I think this is a nice place to start, and we are relatively competitive. And let's just see where it takes us. If we can't find anyone and we are not up to snuff with some of these substitutes, we'll have to revisit the pricing.
To that point, Dr. Prewendowski, in speaking with the superintendent from Brockton, I mean, Brockton, within this kind of region that we're kind of in, is probably the highest, I want to say it's a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day. If I remember correctly, from our talks. Basically, when Brockton returned from the winter break, they had to close the high school due to staffing concerns for a few days because of COVID and the rest. So even at a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day, you know, Superintendent Thomas is having a difficult time bringing in subs. So I, I'm hoping the increase will bring more substitutes into buildings. But conversations that I've had with folks that we've reached out to who were former subs or former educators within the district and asked if they want to come back to sub, is that right now, you know, it, it's difficult for people to make a decision to come back into public school buildings in the middle of a pandemic. It's, they, they either have pre-existing conditions themselves, or they're taking care of an elderly parent, or they, you know, have a spouse or a child at home that has a pre-existing condition. So I think the pay increase may help. I just, I just don't know if, you know, throwing money at the problem is going to solve it. Just because I think right now it's more about people's apprehension of coming into school buildings than it is about the pay rate. Because again, going back to Brockton being a hundred and thirty-five dollars a day, which is the highest in this area. And they, they are still up against it when it, when it, when it comes to fill, filling positions, especially at their high school. So I think this is something that's not a BR issue. It's throughout the Commonwealth and it's throughout the nation right now because of, I think, folks' apprehension about coming into school buildings. So hopefully, this increase will help. You know, we're trying to do everything we can. I've been putting it into the blast of the last few weeks to contact Lisa Cudero. If you're interested, I'm not sure if Mrs. Cudero's gotten any folks coming forth through, kind of putting the feelers out. We've talked about putting on signage on our, on our school grounds about it as well, and trying to get the word out best we can. So hopefully, tonight's increase might be, you know, an incentive for folks to come in. But I'm cautiously, I guess, optimistic that it will. But I just don't know, knowing that other districts have higher rates and still can't get folks in.
Also, once Ms. Cudero posts for the ESPs, if we do need those, if this pay rate, if we're not seeing anything, she can also update us and let us know that, you know, we did not get enough, or we did not get any, you know, or if there's any feedback on that as well. Even if this is voted in so we can get this, it does not mean that we can't revisit it if we find that it's lacking. Do we have any more comments? Mr. Fiskens, did you have a question?
No, it was covered in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Cudero, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I will keep you informed of, you know, how, if there's been any increase in the next, in the next month, I'll monitor. I'll monitor, you know, the, the substitute vacancies, fillings, both the ESPs and the substitute teachers. We haven't really honestly had a need for substitute ESPs that much in the past, but we're finding now we do. So we're hoping that with, with the new, with the new rate, with the, and with the postings, that we'll have, we'll have better luck bringing in some ESPs. And also for ESP, there, there is no, the only requirement is really a B, a high school diploma or a GED. Whereas a substitute teacher, we do require an associate's degree.
Thank you, Ms. Cudero.
You're welcome.
This will be a roll call vote. This is Conrad. Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Fiskens.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook.
Aye.
Mr. Smir.
Aye.
Dr. Prewendowski.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Cudero.
And then prior to the start of our budget meeting on the 10th, Mr. Swenson actually received a phone call from Mr. Delisle, who's our food service manager, regarding the issue with Steamer at the current Mitchell School, this building. And I'm sorry, we never did bring that up at the budget subcommittee under other. So Mr. Delisle has been kind enough tonight to join us to discuss this issue with the whole committee. And I thank him for that.
Yeah, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes. Yes.
Here, Eric.
Okay, great. As far, first of all, just good evening to everybody, Madam Chair, School Committee, Mr. Swenson, other guests. Thanks for having me here tonight. As far as the particular circumstance with the steamer at the Mitchell Elementary School, yeah, it recently died. And we're in the process of getting some quotes to get this fixed up as quickly as possible. In the meantime, it shouldn't affect too much production in that kitchen. So I don't anticipate it being too much of an issue in the short term perhaps, but not in the long term. Any questions about the steamer, or I can go on with the report for the entire school year if I could.
Yes.
Thanks for having me here. First and foremost, I want to thank my entire food services staff at each of the six schools that we serve. Every day, I'm amazed by their dedication, experience, abilities, can-do attitude. Our staff is the number one reason for our success, and I thank them every day. A few updates with regard to the state and financials. All meals, breakfast and lunch at all schools continue to be free for all students until the end of this school year. We have yet to hear, school meals will be free next school year. A decision should be made soon, we hope. Reimbursement rates, what we get for school meals from the state and federal sources for 2021-22 are higher than the rates from previous years due to COVID. We do not know yet if the rates will continue to increase after this school year, or if they will go back to pre-COVID levels. We are anxiously waiting for word on that, too, from the USDA and the state. We're currently serving about 3,000 free school lunches and 500 free school breakfast daily. This is an increase in sales of about 50% compared to pre-COVID level. More students are having breakfast and/or lunch at school than ever before at PR. With increased meals served and a higher reimbursement rate, we will cover some of the losses incurred last school year during the COVID and hybrid model. That being said, COVID has affected what we do in school food service, of course. It's been almost two years. We've been through a lot from the early days of serving meals in the circle at the high school to the days of hybrid learning and meal pickups at La Liberty in Mitchell last school year. We've served meals in hallways and in classrooms. Now we're serving free meals to every student that wants one, which has introduced new challenges, particularly staffing and production. During hybrid learning in 2021, 2020 to 21, we had to lay off about a third of our staff due to COVID. At that time, we operated with about 28 staff members. Currently, within school learning and higher demand for free meals, we are operating with 46 staff. Staffing at schools has been affected by COVID. It's been tricky. I've been working with nurse leader Claire Greman to determine staff quarantine needs, staff return to workdays, and more. Thank you, Claire. We've all heard about the supply chain and disruptions to the supply chain, and we can see it in the supermarkets when we go shopping. We've had some disruptions too, especially early in the school year. We've had increased costs, the USDA commodities or the free items that we get from the government, it's a lot less predictable. Purchasing is sometimes hit and miss. You don't really know what you're going to receive, even though you voted it. And we're making do. I must say that purchasing has, some of the challenges of purchasing seem to have become less frequent in recent weeks. Other notes, we're trying to keep the cafeteria menu simple and predictable for the students, items that we're, we're confident will be available. We aim to serve the student favorites as quickly and efficiently as possible. Quickly and efficiently is super important these days. The, the students still have the same amount of time in the cafeteria to enjoy their lunch. Meanwhile, we're serving more students, and we need to get them through the line quickly and efficiently, and I think we're doing that in most cases. All of the lines are open at all of the schools, and we offer a variety of options at each school every day. Fresh fruits and vegetables are available every day. We currently serve à la carte snack and beverage options at four of the six schools. We've still suspended the classroom celebrations where treats can be delivered to an entire classroom. We haven't been doing that for the last two years. Claire and I have recently discussed bringing this popular program back in the months to come, if COVID allows. This is big at the elementary level, for classroom celebration. Other notes, facilities, we've made quite a few improvements to the facilities and equipment at a few of our schools in the past several months. Early in 2021, we applied for equipment grants through the state, and we were approved for $25,000 in grants, which included two new reach-in refrigerators, a reach-in freezer, and repairs on an existing walk-in cooler. In addition, we modernized both the walk-in cooler and walk-in freezer at the Mitchell Elementary School and replaced the ice machine at the Rainham Middle School recently. We're currently eyeing up projects that need to be addressed, including the new steamer at Mitchell, which we already spoke about. Walk-in freezer repairs at the Merrill and La Liberty School are definitely in the near future. It'll be this spring or perhaps this summer, we'll hopefully be doing something there. Increase, we're also anxiously awaiting the new school opening in September. And we've started to make plans for 2023, especially with regard to staffing. We'll see what we get when we get going in the building. We all hope that COVID will soon be in the rearview mirror. It's important for us as a food service department to remain flexible. Thankfully, our staff is up to the task as changes and new challenges occur. We are hoping that we will soon be able to get back to more promotions in the cafeteria, expanded menu offerings, classroom celebrations, more classroom visits, more catering, and a sense of overall normalcy, which we're getting close to. It feels like we're getting there. Oh, my fingers are crossed. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Do we have any questions from committee?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I do not, thank you.
Next, we have long-range planning subcommittee report.
Thank you. On January 24th at 6:30, the long-range planning subcommittee met to further revise and discuss a student withdrawal survey. Committee members participating in the meeting were Mrs. Conrad, Mr. Barrera, Mr. Fiskens, and myself as long-range subcommittee chair. Also attendance was Mr. Swenson, school superintendent, Menco, database manager, and community group reporting secretary. In this meeting, Mr. Conrad shared with the committee a revised student survey that took into account the suggested revisions made by the school committee at our previous meeting. Some of the key revisions were cutting down the number of questions to streamline the survey, revising the wording of some questions and response choices. You can see a new copy of the revised student base survey in your school meeting folder. This new version utilizes Google Forms to collect the data, which will also be able to easily track and tabulate the responses for future review. Menco and our district database manager approved of using Google Forms as we are a Google district, so this method would work best for the district. We also addressed with her the best ways to disseminate the survey. And it was suggested that when an attending student's family or guardian signed the records release form, the link to the survey would be emailed to them at that time, and they would be encouraged to complete the survey. We went on to discuss with Mr. Swenson, Mrs. Cohen, that that data from this survey could be presented once a year in October when Mr. Swenson gets his annual student approval update. While we recognize that some reasons for students leaving the district are outside of our control, our hope is that this data could be used to help find ways to continue to improve the district, meet our students' ever-changing needs to the best of our ability. to the best of our ability while recognizing that we are strained by available resources and funding. If the committee approves this student base survey, we would like to immediately implement it and also send it to students who have left the district during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year as well. Uh, was everyone able to see it and are there any questions about the revised survey?
Mr. Dolan. Um, the preamble to the survey doesn't say that it's voluntary. The word voluntary isn't in there. I just, I think we need to put that in there. So people know that it's, that it's not our, I appreciate the message going out and encouraging folks, but I, I think it needs to be stated that it's voluntary. Um, I also do have a, uh, a concern about question about boatech and agricultural, um, and the message that's gonna send. I, I, I hope that folks don't think by us asking that question that we are gonna all of a sudden become a, turn our high school into a boatech school. Uh, so I understand, I think, the, the purpose behind it, but I also think the message needs to be figured that that doesn't mean we're all of a sudden gonna go to a boatech system here at PR when we already paid to go into as part of another regional district that falls out. So I just.
So we did discuss that and, um, we recognize that many of those programs, the boatech, we can't afford to run here and it's very specialized and very expensive. But the thought process is if there is some, if one of those programs, we can bring in some sort of special offering or class that'd be similar. So is that something students are interested in, but is affordable within our budget confines, then it might be something we're looking into, um, borrowing. But then it's also, we recognize that there's some of these that, you know, they're leaving us because it's something that we can't offer and won't be able to offer. But at least helps us understand better why people are moving, uh, more for consideration for our parents.
Yeah, okay. As long as we're.
Yeah, no, we recognize we're not like, hey, let's put in auto volume show.
Right, exactly.
Do we have any other? How could I point out, um, did we determine that Mrs. Cohen would be tabulating all these results? So who's gonna actually gather, I mean, you, you gotta fill out the form and they're gonna tabulate it, but who in our district is actually gonna disseminate the information to us?
So all the data would come back through the survey and you collect it for the whole year. So we didn't want to make it like a continuous thing like, um, well, no matter when you leave during the school year, that data will be collected and then just be presented one time, um, and I don't know if this Colin will put together or Mr. Swenson, but he will present as part of his, um, student enrollment in October just to kind of get a little like, these are the number of kids that left since last year and just to highlight of, you know, what are some of the reasons why? So as a committee, we better understand, um, you know, what are the different reasons that we, is our lead district? Is there anything that maybe could drive us in the future to maybe bring in programs or any changes we could do to help better serve the community? And like we said, we recognize that funding and, um, resources is obviously a huge, um, restraint on our end for some of these things. But if we do notice a continuous thing that we could easily do and do it affordably, it could be an opportunity, so.
Yeah, I, I just, I would be up to Mr. Swenson, just so that they're not sitting somewhere that we don't know what's going on. So someone's gonna have to.
Google Forms, like just tab, tab, like every server that pops in and you just pull the data in October. Um, we, he said most of the students would be leaving come June, July, as they're getting ready to transfer into that event, give them time to skip the surveys. Uh, we recognize that was a discussion that a lot of people wouldn't fill out the survey. It's not going to be mandatory, but be encouraged and helpful. But, um, and that was something, um, that was also brought up suggesting how many people didn't even bother filling out surveys. So we know it's like only twenty percent filled out. So this is a, a small snapshot of what people love in districts.
Thank you, Mrs. Ford.
No, it was answered. Thank you.
Um, with the addition of potentially just adding voluntary to that preamble, would be okay to make a motion for this review? Would that be a valid review?
This would be. Take me to motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the district to adopt the student withdrawal survey, having administered to students that choose to leave the district.
And we'll just add on to that preamble.
Okay, good. Second, subject to the addition of the, uh, preamble, uh, change to.
Okay, um, motion made by Mr. Ford and second, if I remember. Do we have any other questions from that committee? None, just roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad, um, Mr. Dolan.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mr. Mur?
Aye.
Dr. Fuendeski?
Aye.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Ford?
I just want to thank Mrs. Conrad for really spearheading this and, um, really handling a lot of the work with this. So I'd kind of give her all that. That's what I appreciate. That concludes, uh, our report.
Thank you for the long range of input, Mr. Ford. Um, and I really do like the survey, like from a budget and a long range planning. I really foresee getting some good data from that where we might be lacking. Even if we don't have the resources, it can be a long range thing of what are the things we might want to incorporate or what direction we need to go. And it will be helpful. Um, next we have personnel report with Ms. Cidero.
Hello again. I just want to thank the budget subcommittee and the school committee for approving the increases to the substitute rates. It's much appreciated. The personnel report is as follows. At the high school, Kim Williamson had a position changed from interventionist to math teacher on January third. At the Rainham Middle School, Bethany Colburn was appointed to grade eight science teacher on one ten. Rahab Rashid, from a long-term sub to a temporary special education teacher through the end of the school year, was appointed on twelve fifteen, twenty twenty-one. The George Mitchell Elementary School apen- appointed Ben Lovell from substitute to permanent ESP effective January sixth. At the La Liberty Elementary School, Meredith Maserta was appointed to temporary healthcare proctor the school year and was appointed on January tenth. For the central office in district, Christine Cobb Robertson was appointed as Fed Administrator on one thirteen, twenty twenty-two. Earl Butch Mulligan from the temporary custodian on one five. Barry Callahan, temporary custodian through the end of June. Retirements Kathleen Chappelle, grade two teacher, La Liberty, six thirty, twenty twenty-two, after twenty-four years of service. Peter Pina, ESP therapeutic day program, twelve twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, after sixteen years of service. Owen Gaspardi, art teacher at Williams, on June third, twenty twenty-two, after twenty-four years of service. The following resignations were received. Colleen Daly, math teacher at high school, on twelve twenty-three, twenty-one. Susan Hebert, temporary healthcare proctor at La Liberty on January fourteenth. Adrian Hayden, grade eight teacher, RMS, January fifth. Adrian, Adriana White, proctor, RMS preschool, twelve twenty-four, twenty twenty-one. And Helene Maria, proctor, Williams, one seven twenty-two. If there are no questions, that concludes my personnel report.
Do we have questions from the committee? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Darrow.
Thank you.
Uh, next, under new business, we have a senior object presentation of Mr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, members of the audience, this time I'd like to present Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District's two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three preliminary student success budget presentation. The Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District's mission statement is to provide excellence in education for all students in a safe learning environment. Our budget is based upon our student success plan that we put, uh, together, uh, a few years ago. And basically we've identified four pillars that drive, um, our district forward and drive this operational budget. They are safe and supportive schools, curriculum and instruction, technology and facilities. Just a little background for, um, folks who may be new to the committee and, um, members of our community who may have not heard previous presentations in regards to the operational budget. The operational budget is dependent upon three primary funding sources. First, uh, is our state aid, which accounts for about thirty-three percent of our overall operational budget. And it, uh, includes chapter seventy money, which is based upon our student enrollment numbers. That's why we take our SIMS data on October first and support and then, um, put that into the state and also chapter seventy-one, which is our regional transportation. Uh, when regionalization first came aboard, um, the incentive was that districts who regionalized, we're gonna receive one hundred percent, uh, reimbursement cost of all general transportation, not special education, uh, transportation. Um, with that being said, the caveat being if funding is available. Uh, to this point, we have never had one hundred percent, uh, regional reimbursement on transportation. And we're usually anywhere between sixty, uh, to, to eighty percent on, on a good year. And the remaining, uh, cast to come out of our, um, other areas of, uh, the operational budget. And Medicaid reimbursement is the other state funding. Then the next piece is our town assessments, which account for approximately sixty-four percent of our operational budget. And that means going out to our, um, contributing towns of Bridgewater and Rainham. Um, please note that the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District also offsets the cost of the assessments to each town proactively each year by taking funding from our E and D, our, um, excess and deficiency accounts and offsetting that budgets, um, with, with a certain amount of money that we put in each year. Some years it's eight hundred thousand, up to about one point five million, um, uh, one year. And the third, uh, bite of the apple here is, uh, district revenues, which count for about three percent of our overall budget. And that's our fee structure, things such as parking, athletic fees, rental fees for our facilities. And again, our excess and deficiency appropriation. When we talk about budgets, we talk about budget, budget assumptions. These are things that, uh, we know, um, are going to come our way in regards to our, our budget. First, we develop what is called a needs-based budget. Everything we're, uh, asking for here are needs of the district. Um, no wants. These are things that we feel that we need to, uh, put in place in order to run an effective and efficient um, district here within Bridgewater Rainham. That supports our planning for our, uh, success model, which I just introduced. Provide consistent academic rigorous planning throughout the district. Provide learner resources to support teaching. So not only, um, staff, but you know, the additional staffing, but the Chromebooks, the curriculum resources and, uh, the professional development that goes along with that. And meeting our contractual retiree regulations and legal statutory obligations. Each year we try to, uh, find different ways of trying to, uh, implement cost avoidance measures within the district. Uh, one big one is our collaborative bidding, uh, through, uh, the tech bid list and our, um, comp buys. Basically what we do is we partner with neighboring districts, uh, throughout the Commonwealth and we then order, um, through these, um, chains in bulk and that allows us to get supplies and resources and materials at a lower rate. Collaborative contract negotiations with collective bargaining. We just, uh, finished our collective bargaining, um, negotiations with our teachers, our ESPs. And, um, we are now awaiting for, um, our custodial and secretarial, um, collective bargaining units to, uh, come forward and, and agree to, um, our negotiating, um, teams wants and needs throughout the negotiating process. In-house licensing, um, maintenance staff, we have our own electrician, we have our own plumber, we have our own carpenter. So we're able to offset costs of going out to outside vendors, which can be very costly, uh, to do some of the project that we identify throughout the course of the district. In-house snow removal and this weekend, uh, I think these folks are gonna be busy. So, um, basically a few years back, we did, uh, kind of a cost analysis of what just clearing the high school parking lot would be, um, through an outside vendor. And the cost we got for just clearing the high school, um, parking lot for one storm, we realized that we could create a plow fleet that could handle all seven of our sites. Um, and by buying our own, uh, plow fleet equipment, trucks, plows, salt, uh, salt, salters and using our own staff to do the, um, snow removal with overtime cost. It was more cost efficient to do so with our own, uh, folks and our own equipment rather than going to outside vendors. Technology licensing programs that we have, um, offset, um, a lot of our costs within, um, our operational budget. Mr. Joe Velos earlier this evening talked about our in-district, uh, special education programs. We are very proud of those programs that Mrs. Thomas before, uh, Mr. Joe Velos and what Mr. Joe Velos continues to do in the designing of these in-district special education programs that allows us to educate our own students within our district and our district schools. But what it also allows us to do is offset the cost of very high, um, tuitions to some of these schools and travel, uh, expenses. Green initiatives, we've continued to, um, implement LED lighting and new mechanicals that are more efficient and res- and brought back our recycling plan and our annual October first budget freeze each year. Uh, once the opera, once the, uh, new fiscal year begins July one, we encourage our principals, our directors, our managers to purchase what they need, um, to, to begin the school year. Then as of October first, Mrs. Messina and I have that conversation and we shut down the budget. Obviously, if there is a, um, you know, need that a principal or director has, um, they can come to us and we can, we can talk about that. And obviously if they, if their department or if their school needs it, um, we will, um, you know, allow them to, to purchase after October first. But really truly what we're trying to do is, um, you know, really gauge what the, the upcoming winter's going to be. And, um, once we get past that, um, what we feel is the end of the snow cycle sometime in March, April, we then will unfreeze the budget and, um, then we're looking towards, you know, how many warrants we have left, uh, throughout the course of this school year and kind of what we're gonna have on the bottom line. Because again, with this plan that we have, we know we have to put a certain amount of money into our E and D, um, to make sure that we can offset future, uh, year budgets. So we want to make sure we always have a healthy bottom line. And Mrs. Messido reports out to the budget sub every month and she is, um, you know, really, really good at what she does and she's very fiscally conservative. And, um, you know, she, she holds my feet to the fire when it comes to, uh, purchasing. So I, I do appreciate her and all that she does in order to get, you know, provide us with a healthy bottom line each and every year and coming in, uh, the black each and every year. We do have, uh, some, you know, budget cost drivers. Um, right now we do have aging facilities and grounds. Our newest building, uh, right now is about fourteen years old, um, that being the high school. Um, so it does come down to having to replace some of, um, the, you know, and then repair some of the facilities and grounds. So here's just kind of a snapshot of, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three's operational and maintenance capital items that we're looking, uh, to do in Bridgewater. You see all of those items there. Um, replacing the, uh, selected area doors at BMS, update key cards for the doors at BMS, update LED lighting at the Williams and replace exterior lighting controls at, at the Williams and rebuild the existing boilers, uh, two at the, the Williams here. So each town is responsible for their own K eight buildings. And then district-wide costs more go towards the high school, which is our only truly regionalized site and any district-wide programming or things such as our plowing or facilities that we would need. So if you look at that, the, the cost, um, just the K eight, uh, side of things in, uh, the town of Bridgewater would be about a, um, just about a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in, uh, capital needs. In Rainham, replace one, um, man lift at La Liberty, replace existing phone system at La Liberty. Replace existing phone system at Law Liberty. Replace the chiller at RMS, which has been an ongoing issue for us. And replace boiler number five and six at RMS for a cost of about three hundred and nine thousand dollars. For again, the town of Rainham's K eight buildings. Now, please note that all of these items have been put into a ten-year capital item improvement plan. That's been put together in the past by previous directors of facilities, Mr. Fox and Mr. Machiko. Now our interim director of facilities, Mr. Kildore now is looking at that and modifying and tweaking this as we go. And we have already shared this information with the towns. Each year we do share our capital improvement plan and our technology five-year plan. So then if we look at our district-wide needs, again, these are for the high school or any type of programming that's or any type of department that impacts the district district-wide. So there is a need for a new utility body and snowplow setup. And that again, ends up becoming later a cost avoidance measure by having our own folks do the plowing. That's about seventy thousand dollars. An F two fifty standard pickup that would probably be most likely be used in our plowing fleet, sixty thousand. Or replacement of the high school track, the high school track's been offline since about two thousand sixteen. And Mr. Kilgore has reached out to a company that does many tracks in around the the area and it's about eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. Last year, we did replace the multipurpose field and this year we are looking to replace the track. We did, we I realized that these are big ticket items and but we do truly believe that they play into the overall K through twelve academic experience, allowing our students to have good facilities for athletics and extracurricular activities and the rest. So we're replacing the high school lighting controls of ninety thousand for a total of one million seventy thousand dollars. Now, what happens is with the funding mechanism is that through the regional agreement. Bridgewater absorbs about sixty percent of those costs. So sixty percent of those district-wide costs is an additional six hundred forty-six thousand two hundred eighty dollars on top of that amount that they had for their K eight buildings for a total of eight hundred twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars in capital costs. To the town of Bridgewater. And Rainham, that thirty-nine point sixty percent or almost forty percent equates to four hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. And then when you add that to their K eight number of three oh nine, you come up with a capital expense for the town of Rainham number of seven hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Some of our other budget cost drivers, technology and educational devices. And again, similar to our capital improvement plan, we do have a technology improvement plan, and I want to thank Mr. Shants, who is our IT manager for working so hard on that in the in the last few years, putting that together. Where we would not have a ten-year plan, just because technology moves so quickly, we've made it a five-year plan. So this is looking at some of the different projects and devices and things that Mr. Shants wants to wants to bring in in terms of, you know, technology. Again, the K eight buildings for the towns that handle their own and then more district-wide costs for, say, the high school. Or maybe program, any type of technology used for in-district pro special education programs that are more district-wide programs. Would fall into that district-wide category. So you look at what Mr. Shants is asking for here, projectors and interactive panels at the Williams camera system upgrades at BMS. And project and interactive panels at BMS for a grand total of about three hundred fifty thousand dollars in technology capital items. And in the Rainham side of the district, camera system upgrade at Law Liberty. Projectors and interactive panels at Law Liberty, camera system upgrades at the Merrill. And projector and interactive panels at RMS for a cost of about two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars to the town of Rainham for their K eight schools. Then the district-wide, we're looking at these for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School. You look at a PA system for the Bell's schedule. And an auditorium phase two project and also capital, I'm sorry, security cameras system there as well. So another additional one hundred and ninety five thousand. So again, that funding mechanism of that sixty forty split equates to about one hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars for the town of Bridgewater. And seventy-seven thousand two hundred twenty dollars for the town of Rainham. And then when you go back to add those to the existing K eight expenses. You have four hundred sixty-seven thousand seven hundred eighty dollars in capital technology items for the town of Bridgewater. And three hundred, let me see, three hundred sixty-two thousand two hundred and twenty dollars for the town of Rainham. Some other budget drivers include new curriculum supplies and materials, contractual obligations. Retirement benefits, insurances such as health liability, property unemployment, transportation, general and special education and foster care McKenney Vento for students and families of that become homeless throughout the school year. Special education tuitions and additional staffing. So I'd like to right now just share with you some of our additional staffing requests that we are making. We've started this process back in October with our principals and directors and managers. And we feel based upon the student success plan, these are positions that we need to bring into the district in order to move us forward. You know, going to going down the line and becoming more effective and efficient throughout the coming years. Now, I will state that we were had to prioritize these positions. We probably had over thirty positions come to us in terms of requests. I met with Mr. Powers and Mrs. Joyce and Mrs. Richards and Mr. Jovalos and spoke with Kathy. And right now we feel as though this is, these are the positions that we need to advocate for. So first, on the Bridgewater side, at the Bridgewater Middle School. We are looking for a seventh grade ELA teacher, a seventh grade social studies and a seventh grade science, technology, engineering. When we had some significant cuts to our budget back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. During some pretty lean years here in the district. We had to consolidate staff, I think it equated to sixty-four layoffs throughout the district. I will tell you one building that really got hit the hardest was that of Bridgewater Middle School. I only say that and I know that because I lived it, I was the principal at the time. We had to, we had teachers teaching out of field. We later then went to five-person teams. And what that does is it raises that number from, you know, the usual team of students that's ninety to a hundred was now up to one fifty and the real true middle school concept is to have that, you know, group of about ninety to a hundred students really from a social emotional perspective, kind of, kind of develop a sense of family within those teams. And really truly get to know that group of students. And what happens is when you get to numbers of one hundred fifty, kind of what we're looking at right now, it becomes extremely difficult. So this is something that never has been remedied since, you know, back in two thousand nine, ten, since those cuts. So we're really advocating for that so that Mr. Caleb and Mr. Heinz can add that extra team. They are coming to their original building. And again, they were, you know, a school without a home for the last, you know, five years due to the roof collapse. We had the eighth grade at the high school and the seventh grade down at the Williams and they did an incredible job of keeping it all together. But really now that all of the eighth, seventh and now sixth grade are all going to be under the same roof here at one sixty-six mile prospect. We really true want to advocate to get some of that staff back that they lost back in two thousand nine, ten. In Rainham, we're looking for one school adjustment counselor and one civics teacher. There is now a civics project at the eighth grade. So we are looking for certified staff to teach curriculum, the social studies curriculum. There is a team right now that's a three-person team and they all share the social studies curriculum. So we're looking for a certified social studies teacher to take that on. And right now, the school adjustment counselor, I mean, as we've been talking about the social emotional impact. Even pre-COVID that we were experiencing now, you know, somewhat hopefully we're soon to be post-COVID. Even though it seemed like we're still living it, we are sent, you know, there's a sense of some real need in the areas of social emotional supports for our students. So we have incrementally asked for school adjustment counselors throughout previous budgets. The school committee has been terrific in in kind of getting those positions through. This is a position that is currently being funded through one of our COVID grants, but it'll only be funded through two thousand twenty-four. So we think it's important because there are other positions too that are being supported by the COVID grants. That we start to incrementally get those into the operational budget. Because if not, we're going to lose those positions once those grants dry up down the line. Look for at the high school, we, Mrs. Watson has been advocating for this business teacher for many years and she and I've had conversations. We've had conversations with the department head, Mr. Ferrera, and the things that he wants to do and the vision he has for that department. And it really truly needs to be an additional business teacher in that department in order to put some of those elective courses together for our students and really truly drive that business program, you know, forward. Mr. Ferrer is doing a great job. He's the the department head of the business department. He has also, you know, established a club called DECA. That goes along with the business model that he goes out to competitions with and they've been incredibly successful. So the more electives that we can offer through that department is going to benefit all of our students. So especially looking to go on to that business track at the higher ed level. District-wide, we are looking for two nurses, similar to the school adjustment counselor that I just mentioned. We currently have two nurses that are being funded through the COVID grants. And Desi did inform us that for a district this size, we are understaffed for our nurses. And especially everything that they have been dealing with, you know, with COVID. They have done yeoman's work in that department under the leadership of Mrs. Grant. And I can't thank those individuals enough, but we do need to increase those numbers. And again, they are being funded by grants, so we have to incrementally get these back in before those grants expire in two thousand twenty-four. From a district perspective, we are looking at a sub-separate program. Again, Mr. Jovalos talked about some of the in-district programming that we have created over time and he's done a wonderful job with that. Eventually, this position will really become a cost avoidance measure in that we'll be able to retain more kids in district than going outside of district. So there could be a situation where one or two out of district tuitions or travel costs can fund that entire request of one sub-separate teacher and two ESPs. So we're looking to put that program in place. And, you know, again, that becoming a situation where we are able to educate our own students here in their home districts. From a technology standpoint, right now, we have a technician that is on a grant to help Mr. Shant's program. We have right now, including Mr. Shants, a department of four with that with that one additional network technician. And if you think about the number of devices that we've been able to replenish through COVID money and the rest. Now with a new school coming online with a lot of technology and that type of technology, we're going to be looking to implement into our other sites, having a staff of, you know, four is incredibly difficult to keep up with. But having a staff of three, which was was originally is really difficult. And Mr. Shant has advocated for this position in previous budgets as well. So we're asking, you know, consideration for that network technician as well. More district-wide, we have a need for an additional English as a second language teacher. Basically, when I came to central office ten years ago as the assistant superintendent. I took care of the ESL component of the district. And I think at that point, we had about maybe thirty to forty students. Now we're well over a hundred, so we really truly need to have supports in place to provide those those students and those families throughout our district. The business office is asking for an assistant treasurer. A few years back, we had an assist, we had a treasurer and an assistant treasurer. And basically, we did not fill the assistant treasurer, but it is becoming a situation where the needs of that office through the treasurer, Mrs. Robichaux, she really needs some additional support. So we are advocating for an additional treasurer and we're asking for one custodian. And that one custodian will allow us to bring us up to our staffing needs, which we will need in order to open up the new George Mitchell Elementary School in July of twenty-two. So the overall staffing requests. Three from the town of Bridgewater. Through two from Rainham, one from the high school. And nine district-wide for a total of fifteen. And if you remember, I stated earlier, we started with well over thirty requests. So it's very difficult because each principal used to do what I used to do as a principal. You come in, you advocate for your building, that's what they need to do. We unfortunately sometimes cannot meet their need at the building level. We have to think more globally from a district perspective. And, you know, the district office team really kind of came with, you know, those fifteen positions. After we came with that fifth, that decision of moving forward with these fifteen individuals, we did start getting some correspondence from, you know, parents from the community, as did US School Committee members about the average class size in some of our kindergarten classes throughout the district, both in Bridgewater and Rainham. So the next slide will show you. As we started to look a little bit deeper into this, we realized now that with the amount of developments that are starting in units, starting to come online in both communities. Build it and they will come, you know, they are, we're building these hundred fifty unit developments in both sides of the district. And with that, they're coming in with school-aged children. It's usually children that are at the younger grade levels. And we were looking at, you know, some in some areas, average class sizes of twenty-seven. So we started to look at, all right, what does that mean if we brought in one teacher? So really adding one teacher to the teaching staff at the kindergarten level is only going to bring it down by two students. So you're still going to have that, you know, ratio, student-teacher ratio of twenty-five to one. If you had two teachers, you may come and bring it down to twenty-three, bring it down, you know, three teachers would be twenty-one. Then we started to look at it from the lens of, could we bring in educational support staff at a, at a, at a lesser rate? And then really truly have those individuals be in those classrooms with the kindergarten teachers. So we looked at, you know, if we brought in fourteen additional educational support professionals, that would lower that student to educator rate to thirteen to one. We'd look at six of those ESPs going to the Merrill Elementary School and eight of those ESPs going to the Mitchell Elementary School. We do have special education inclusion sections at the kindergarten level. They already have special education and ESP supports throughout the course of the day. So these individual educational support professionals would actually go into our general ed classes and not in our inclusion section. So after we looked at those fifteen positions, we started to look at to say, okay, we should probably advocate for these fourteen additional education support staffs. So with that being said, it would be an additional fourteen would bring up that number to twenty-nine positions, which we know is not the norm of what I would ask for in any given year. It truly is not, but we really feel as though right now with the growing classes, you know, at this early level that they, those supports are needed for those for those students. I did, when I presented to the towns, stated that, you know, with all of this growth in both communities. You know, I, it would really behoove all of us if I could be invited to a planning, a zoning meeting. So that when they're making decisions on these developments coming in, that the same way they would ask the chief of fire and chief of police, what's the impact? that the same way they would ask the chief of fire and chief of police, what's the impact on the municipal department? I could explain to them the impact that it has on our, on our schools. So you maybe not wouldn't have some of this sticker shock that, you know, we're currently having. And many of you are sitting there saying, wow, twenty-nine positions. But really, truly, if, you know, we want to add support at the kindergarten level, it's really a, I don't think this is an anomaly. I think this is something that we're going to be looking at as, you know, the average class size for a few years now that these developments are coming online. So when we look at the overall budget numbers for this budget, and you have all of the different series, account series, and you look at it in comparison to FY twenty-two, and the FY twenty-two number, which we are currently under, the grand total for operations without capital and debt is seventy-seven million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. The proposed FY twenty-three budget would be eighty-five million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, and forty dollars. Then we go to add our capital expenses that we just kind of walked through for our K eights. And then the district wide, that both towns have that sixty forty split on. Last year, we asked for one million, thirty-six thousand in capital expenses. And this year, it is two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand in capital expenses. And the retirement and debt and services last year was five million, four hundred three thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. And this year, it is four million, eight hundred fifty-two thousand, seventy-one. So the grand total last year for this, for this operational budget for this school year is with capital and debt is eighty-three million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred and eight. And if everything was to be approved for this FY twenty-three proposed budget with capital and debt would be ninety-two million, nine hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. You look at, you know, the pie chart that we always add as part of our presentation. You see that fifty-three percent is instructional services, that's what we do. That's our, that's our biggest piece because that's, again, we're here as an institution of learning. So that's our teachers, staff, that's our ESPs, that's all of our curriculum resources, and everything else that goes with what exactly we do. Three percent is administration, eighteen percent is our fixed costs, eight percent is our operations in maintenance, ten percent is other school services, transportation falls under that, athletics. And then you look at eight percent is programs with other districts, and that would be our out of district placements. That again, Mr. Joe Velos has tried to proactively continue to reduce those numbers by creating more in district programming and retaining our kids here in district for their education and not sending them out to other districts for those services. So a basic budget timeline, I'll just kind of, you know, let you look at it at a glance. These are some of our upcoming budget sub meetings. And then we look at, you know, the February twenty-fifth date, you know, the publication, the seventh, make it available to the public, at least one copy of the proposed budget. And this would be then in March ninth, having the actual public hearing. At that time, a presentation will be made by the chair of the budget subcommittee, Dr. Prey Wondowski. The following school committee meeting would be the vote of the budget, the rate of the school committee. And then the May meeting, right now, we believe this is what has been from, from trend in the past. It used to be that Rainham would vote first, and then it would be Bridgewater. For the last couple of years, it has been the town of Bridgewater voting first. We do have different forms of government, obviously. So basically, that May tenth vote will take place with the town of Bridgewater through the town council. And on May sixteenth, it is the town of Rainham through town meeting. And at that point, we'll know whether or not our budgets have been approved by the towns for the town assessments. Finally, the district will continuously strive to offer twenty-first century educational programs, rigorous instruction in safe facilities driven by the student success model as a means of ensuring that the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District students are successful academically, socially, and emotionally throughout their K twelve experience. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions of the full committee.
Do we have questions coming from the Mr. Florence?
So coming to this meeting, I was kind of curious how we compared other districts with our spending. So I went to Desi to look at, compare the numbers. And I found it interesting slash a little concerning. I looked at per pupil spending, the most recent data they had was from twenty twenty. We ranked three seventy-six out of four hundred and two schools. And I just think that's a point to bring up because Mr. Swinson's advocating for all these positions of which have been unfunded. That it's because we don't, we don't put enough money into the programs in order to meet his, his needs. And so I, I look at that kindergarten class size, I see twenty-seven kids. And I, I mean, that's, that's a ton of kids. I mean, I coach youth sports, I can imagine a teacher in class with these students for an entire day, a hundred and eighty days, trying to get to know every single one of them. And I know comparable districts around here have much smaller class sizes. I also looked at per pupil comparisons by different districts. And I looked at dark schools, which are comparable districts to us. We were, only two schools were funded less per pupil. Of the ten, eight of them were funded higher, and their student to staff ratio was significantly better than ours. So I know there's a ton of positions Mr. Swinson's advocating for, but the truth is, we need to come to terms and we need it. We want to have a competitive district that provides twenty-first century opportunities. But we also need to fund that, and we can, if we want people to really expect that. So I do want to commend Mr. Swinson's team for everything they've done with what we have to work with. But I do just want to point that out, and we'd be remiss not to say it. Because I, I looked at when I first got in there, I said, that's a huge number that Mr. Swinson's asking. But then when you start breaking it down for people at a facility, at a district the size of ours, we're, we're way behind. And so you could look at our MCAT scores, and we're around the fifty percentile. So we find a three seventy-six out of four oh two, and we're in the fifty percentile compared to other districts. So we've done a lot with what funding we do have. So I do just want to acknowledge that. If we want to take further steps forward to push this district, we're going to have to get creative working with the towns, finding other ways of continuing to improve our budgets. And I know there's only so much money, but I just want to put that out there to the public that looks at that class size and says, like, that's unacceptable. I agree, but I, I just want people to understand that's the reasoning, is that we are underfunded compared to other teachers.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that. And then I look at those, twenty-nine is quite a lot. But, you know, I know Mrs. Holbrook would, would say, like, that elementary kindergarten age is so, like, they need so much support at that age, that's the foundation. And on the other side, the other ones that we're advocating for at the middle and high school level, we haven't put a lot of funds towards those. You know, we need to also focus on the middle and high school levels as well, what we need there. So I, I feel like all of them are necessary as well. So I mean, it's going to be tricky to figure out what we're going to be able to fund.
Mrs. King, I just have to say, and I know it's not with dark schools, but, you know, looking at some of our neighbors' school districts and our neighbor's schooling districts is, you know, Middleboro, which is a much smaller school than ours. When you look on Desi's website of the FTEs and teachers, and again, those numbers, they have the same amount of teachers that we do at high school for FTEs. That's concerning to me, again, being supports and keeping our kids in district, even leading eighth grade is, we have the same, almost the same amount of FTEs in the high school that are our high school than Middleboro. And our high school is considerably bigger than Middleboro High School. And I also, and also I just want to say, I'm a, I'm a little concerned is there is no reading specialist, to my understanding, at Rainham Middle School. I would question whether there's a reading specialist at all the schools. And again, coming off of, you know, COVID, even before that, would, I would be interested in whether I read and how we score comparatively across the state. And NCATs, how we score, especially then not having a reading specialist at one of the schools. I am very concerned about that.
Do we have other questions somewhere?
Mr. Swinson, thank you for putting this together. I know it's a daunting task every year. I have two questions. I'll start with the easier one first. Compared to the overall amounts in the budgets compared to last year, why are we not putting a plow on the second F two fifty for ten thousand dollars more? I think is a drop in the bucket. So I don't know if that truck is not being asked for a plow on it to begin with. I know the first F two fifty with the service body says plow setup. So if we're self-sufficient, I believe that every vehicle that we have in the maintenance department should be equipped with a plow in case one of the trucks does go down. So I don't know if that was a typo, or that just wasn't coming with a plow.
Mr. Kilgore?
There you go.
Okay, no, that truck should have a plow, that was a typo. All trucks come with plows.
Just wanted to make sure. I'm looking at the overall budget, I'm like, ten thousand dollars more, why aren't we putting a plow on us?
The, the plow set up for that one is another four, was another four thousand. The utility body is the difference in the, the big difference in the price.
Correct. I know I've been pricing some stuff for my work as the fleet manager as well. And prices for service bodies are ridiculous right now. And Mr. Swinson, my, my only other question I have, and it's a question plus concern, is we're looking at a ten point five one increase from the previous year's budget before capital projects. And then we're expecting the towns to pay a, a, through, I know through Rainham, it's through town meeting, paying a lot more for some capital projects at the K through eight level of the buildings. I'm just not sure if the taxpayers will look at that big amount of an increase at once, at least in the town of Rainham, because I know they're getting ready to put in a police and fire station. That's a, you know, an increase of, you know, when you add it all at the end, it's an eight million dollar increase from last year's operating budget. So I just don't know if by the time we do the public hearing in March, if maybe we can have a breakdown to justify the costs a little bit more in case there are taxpayer questions that do arise at that meeting. Another question is, have we spoken to the towns about their capital projects and what we're foreseeing above and beyond their assessments for the overall school budget?
So I'll take the first piece, Mr. Ferrera. We realize that this is a big ask. We truly do, especially with the additional staffing after we started to get the correspondence from the community about their concerns about the class sizes. We had a very healthy discussion in one of our budget subs about that. Because I know that the committee members were receiving the same communications from parents. So on top of, you know, another big ticket item, capital expense at the high school with the replacement of the track. You know, again, that's been offline since I think about two thousand sixteen. So yeah, it just seems like it's the perfect storm of, you know, all of these bigger, additional staff and big ticket capital items coming together in one, you know, operational budget. So, you know, what we need to do is what we always do, is do our due diligence in our budget subcommittees under the leadership of Dr. Prey Wondowski. And really truly continue to have, we had our first, this kind of goes along with your second question. We did have our first meeting with the towns a few weeks ago. After our budget sub, we did present this budget to Mr. Dutton and Mr. Samanti and members of FinCom in Rainham. No real, they didn't ask any questions that night. But the process is, I start to have individual meetings with these individuals to kind of give me a sense of where you are, you know, in terms of, again, your, to your question, what are your other needs in your town, town budgets? I mean, you have other municipal departments that, that you need to service as well. And then I bring that information back into budget sub meetings. And we start to just realize that, you know, some areas of my preliminary budget need to, to be reduced in certain areas. And it may mean that we have to prioritize some of our capital projects, some of our technology, you know, working with Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Shant's, are there things that we can kind of kick down the road a little bit into another fiscal year to start to lower the, the price of those capital items, which are the big, the real big ticket items outside of the additional staff. But you, you also want to make sure that, you know, there's a reason why we have a capital improvement plan and we have a timeline as to, you know, when things need to be replaced. Because, you know, Kilgore right now, in his position as interim, realizes that, you know, there are some boilers that if we don't replace, we may have, you know, catastrophic failure of, you know, next year. And then we're going to have to go up to the towns anyway for the, for the money. So you're, you're going to be really careful about when you're prioritizing what you really feel can't get kicked down the line a little bit. So all of those discussions are had with the towns. And then all of that work is done through the budget subcommittee to get us to a space where we know what the towns can handle. Today, some numbers were released at the state level in terms of chapter seventy and seventy-one numbers and the rest. So we'll, we'll have a better sense in the next month or so where we are in terms of what the towns can handle, what we're thinking we're going to get from the state, what our revenue side's going to be, and then make those, you know, tough decisions like we always do. And then move forward with the presentation of the public hearing in March. And that will be the budget that we've all worked on collectively together through the budget subcommittee, you know, through those conversations that have been had with the towns and folks at the state level. So I understand your concerns, but I, I don't, I know Dr. Prey Wondowski pretty well. I don't think she's rolling into the public hearing, probably with, you know, a ten percent increase in those areas. And we're going to have to, I have to, I have to advocate for, you know, the district. But I understand that the committee also has to advocate for the towns and the taxpayers. And we have to be reasonable in what we are actually going to, you know, bring forth as the school committee's budget. So we'll all continue to work collectively and diligently to, to get us to a number that we all feel comfortable with. And it's just going to be a lot of communication with stakeholders in, in our towns.
And I do appreciate that. One thing I, I, I hope as, as, as a school committee and as a whole as a district, that we do not kick the can down the road anymore is replacement of the high school track. I know we've done a disservice for our students that do track since, like you said, twenty sixteen. So I'd like to, you know, if we have to make something worse, it needs to be the track this year. We've got to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrer.
Yeah, just to reiterate, this is not the final budget. I mean, Mr. Swinson and his team brings this to us with everything that he thinks that he needs to do his job that we want to do. So it's up to us through budget sub and then the full committee to air that down to something that, like you said, the towns will agree. Do we have more questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
If I may, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Swinson. Very, very enlightening. How are we doing this year versus budget?
In terms of where, where we're looking at where we are right now? In terms of like certain line items?
Just raw.
Yeah, I think we're, we're in good shape right now. We're in good shape right now.
I know we try to turn back a little bit in ED every year, and we're on track to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, good sir.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to, yeah, we, you know, depending upon the E and D, it, it's a model that, you know, we, we kind of, you know, bought into back when we had those drastic cuts in two thousand nine and ten and basically stated, you know, this now has to be part of the process in order to get us back up to, you know, get our staffing needs up and offset those costs to the towns. But it's one of those deals now where, now that we've started that process, we've got to continue it. So each fiscal year, we've got to make sure that we're fiscally conservative enough to have that healthy bottom line to offset the next year's budget. But we're trying to, each and every year, put less and less. But we're trying to each and every year put less and less out of E and D against the assessment to try to kind of, you know, break us out of that, you know, fiscal mechanism right now. But.
And that, that's exactly right. That's a great fiscal policy to have. Because essentially you're just borrowing from this year to pay next year. And that, that doesn't make any sense in the long run. Because, you know, you're giving up this year for next year, but next year isn't promised anyone, as we know. So I, I appreciate that. And I appreciate, I appreciate trying to get out of there. Do we have any programs that we've, we've been able to cut or just get rid of major expenses? I'm not talking minor ones. But just things we were in that we were like, God, this isn't working anymore. Or the cost is, you know, we're, we're, we're done with the program.
Not from a programming standpoint. I would say that, you know, all of the in-district programming that we have created have really flourished to the point where other districts are reaching out to Mr. Jovalos. And we're actually able to tuition in students from other districts that don't have a comparable program. And at a rate that's cheaper than an out-of-district program. And what Mr. Jovalos has done is be able to take that in, put it into our revolving account. And then that money, those monies can be used to offset some of, you know, if we have a move-in to the district that has, you know, some significant needs that we cannot handle and has to go to an out-of-district, that can offset some of those costs that were not, you know, budgeted for the previous year. So I would say that if anything, we've been able to sustain those programs. And you let them, they were almost becoming somewhat of, on a, on a, on a small level, a revenue stream that we're able to bring in funding, put in that revenue, put in that revolving account and offset things that come up that were not predicted or expected.
And, and, and we know that the two big budget busters are two-state mandates, transportation and special ed, which the state has always promised to fund, but never does. So it's great that we've got a revolving fund to help, help fund that, fund that out. That's, that's great. I, I don't know if you have this number or if you can get it to me. But what would, what would this next year's budget look like? If, if we didn't add all of the stuff that you have passionately advocated to add? I, I'm just interested, same story, year over year, what might be called quote unquote, level services? What would the budget increase look like? So that I understand what the baseline is. Because we can't do any less than that. And then we certainly should do more than that. But I, I just want to understand in my mind how that works. So if.
So you're talking about, you're talking about. You're talking about stat, no additional staffing, no, no capital items?
Yeah, no, no, just operation, just operational. And, you know, just, you know, same store, same employees. I, I know people retire and we hire people, et cetera. But just assume the same staff and just say, okay, next year, if we had everybody back and we were doing all the same things, what would the increase be? So that I know what that is kind of bottom line. So, so I've got that. And then, you know, I, I'd love also to see, and I don't know if my fellow committee members are interested in this or not. You, you talked about, obviously, a needs-based budget. And you presented a bunch of needs we have. But obviously, every building soup, every building principal is advocated for many more needs than what came into the budget you just presented. And I'd love to see just the background of that. Because to me, our budget is our biggest policy statement of the year. And so I, I'd like to understand what we're saying no to even before it gets to our level. So, you know, like, oh, well, you know, we, we needed probably multiple, multiple more teachers at the elementary level to, to make sense at a, at a class size level. I understand that. But where, where are we? Like, what, what's the total needs? Because you, you presented a needs-based budget, right? But it's not truly the entire needs. It's just what you think makes the most sense at this point in time, right?
The prioritized needs, I guess we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There are way more needs, right?
We can't roll in with 30, 30 and another, you know.
Yeah, no, I know. But, but, but it's also important to help folks understand in the community that you, you've asked for a 10% increase. And I know we just got, House One just came out today. And I, I looked at it. It doesn't look right to me. I mean, I'd love it if it was true. But, but, you know, what can we, what, what can we, what do we really need so that we can start to frame the conversation as, okay, this is the universe of what we really need. And this is what the superintendent's brought it down to. And then, you know, it, it's just, it's this funnel that we need to be able to explain to people. Does that make sense?
When you want to find out what's on the cutting room floor.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
All right. I can do that.
That would all be very helpful to me as we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Swenson, if you could provide that to the committee after the meeting.
So what I'll do is I'll work with Mrs. Macedo tomorrow. We have all of that because it's, it's, we kind of, you know, when, when we meet with the principals and the directors and things, we make a kind of a master list of, of things. And then myself and, like I said, Mr. Powers, Mr. Jovalos, Mrs. Richards, Mrs. Joyce, start to look at those. And we got down to that 15. So I'll provide you folks with that and also provide you with, with anything, without anything new. What does that mean, just turning the page from FY '22 to '23? And what's the increase there or percentage increase? I should be able to get that for you folks tomorrow. Not a problem.
To turn the page roughly, it's about $1.6, $1.7 million.
Yep, right around there. With Dr. Prewendowski, you're right.
To keep everything we have with the contractual obligations, it's about $1.6, $1.7.
Just a motion to accept the, I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's FY '23 preliminary budget proposal and school committee budget report back to the budget subcommittee.
Aye.
Thank you so much, Mr. Swenson, for that.
I appreciate everyone's support. We'll, we'll get to the real work now, right? Thank you.
Next approval of payroll warrants. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll warrants dated September 16th, 2021, December 30th, 2021, and January 13th, 2022. So motion has been made by Mrs. Holbrook, seconded by Mr. Florence.
Aye.
Mr. Florence.
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook.
Aye.
Mr. Murer. Next, we have with Miss Macedo, acceptance of the implement Mass General Law, Chapter 200, Section 9A.
There we go. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee and Superintendent Swenson. As part of some of the work we're doing in accounting, we have to get rid of, get rid of, but dispose of checks that are what we call stale. They're very old. And obviously, a person hasn't, or a company hasn't cashed those checks. So we have to follow up with those and find out if they ever got it, if it went to the wrong address, whatever. So under Mass General Law, 200, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, it's a law regarding the disposition of abandoned property or, as we call them, sale checks or tailings. We have the account for tailings. However, it was here before I started working here. And I could not find anywhere where they've accepted Chapter 200A, Section 9A. So I wanted to first get that clarified. And then we did put together procedures following the, the laws that come under this section so that we're in line with what they're doing. Basically, a check that we don't get as, you know, being cleared. After 60 days, we start doing an amount of contacting, letter writing, advertising, and trying to get that person to say, no, I lost the check. I have the check. I forgot to deposit it, whatever. Or maybe we have to reissue another check. So we want to follow these guidelines with the 60 days, the amount of money. We have to do some reporting if it's $100 or more. And so we're trying to put this all together so that we can clean up this area. So I need the committee to accept Section, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, a disposition of abandoned property so that we can move forward with the tailings account and know that everything's up to date.
Thank you, Mrs. Macedo. I will entertain a motion to accept the features to implement Mass General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, disposition of abandoned property. Do we have any questions from the committee?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, just through you to Mrs. Holbrook. Does this need to go through the policy committee, Mrs. Holbrook? Or we're good just to vote on it right now?
We're good to vote on it because it's a procedure, not a policy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Any other questions? Mrs. Conrad? I'm Mr. Dolan. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Florence?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murer?
Aye.
Dr. Prewendowski?
Aye.
And the chair. Thank you, Mrs. Macedo.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have an open meeting law complaint. On January 10th, 2022, all members of the school committee received an email copy of an open meeting law complaint from Ms. Cleoni Mangill. As per Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, the committee is to receive a copy of the open meeting law complaint, which they have via the aforementioned email of January 10th, 2022. Further, the school committee is to review the complaint within 14 business days or by Monday, January 31st, 2022. After review, but within that same time period, the committee is to respond to the complaint in writing as well as sending a copy of the response to the Attorney General's office. The committee may delegate this responsibility to its legal counsel after meeting to review the complaint. An extension of time is only permitted by reviewing an extension of time for good cause by contacting the Division of Open Government. This document is a public record. That being said, the complaint was filed on January 20, 10, 2022, against the full school committee with an alleged violation date of December 29th, 2021. I would like to paraphrase the violation and have any discussion on what action the committee would like to take. Supposed violation number one, regarding a letter of December 31st. The letter was discussed, drafted, approved, signed, and distributed without discussion and open meeting without being a stated purpose of any published agenda, therefore violating open meeting law. More specifically, it is the complainant's belief that the letter was drafted and approved behind closed doors at the Bridgewater School Committee's December 29th, 2021 executive session. The stated purpose of that session was to discuss complaints or charges filed against the superintendent, a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, or take any action in response to the discussion, including writing the letter, is therefore outside that purpose and therefore violating open meeting law. Violation number two, from the contents of that letter as stated regarding the December 31st, 2021 letter, it is also the complainant's belief that topics related to the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of a specific individual were also discussed in the executive session on December 29th, 2021. Although those topics were not included on the published agenda for that session. The letter coming out of that session references personal attacks and rumors, which aligns more closely with the discussion about reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health than complaints or charges. The claimant believes this is an example of providing misleading and nonspecific executive session agenda purpose that does not match the planned discussion, therefore violating open meeting law. The complainant would like the specific actions taken, state all letter details, who suggested it, who contributed, who was the author, was it draft circulated, to whom, when was it created? What were the results of any votes? What role did the superintendent play in creating the letter? Potentially issue a public statement about the violation of relevant law, commit to deliberating and acting on superintendent performance-related concerns in open meeting, or, and/or publish a formal complaint, policy, and process. Those are the proposed open meeting law complaint violations that we need to discuss and take actions on prior to January 31st, which is Monday.
Yes, Mr.. I'd like to make a motion to refer this to our legal counsel, Mr. Joe Emerson, who was also an intended at that executive session.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Dolan, seconded by Mrs. Holbrook. Discussion and questions on this. Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Conrad? Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye, yes.
Thank you. I did not hear you.
That's fine. I'll yell louder next time.
Mrs. Holbrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murer?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I will notify Mr. Emerson. And we will have that prior to the deadline. Other business, I do not have any other business. Last on the agenda is public comment, the second public comment of the night. Once again, the school committee wants some information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and ensure compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. I will now open up public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy P P H. And would ask anyone that would like to speak to turn on their camera if possible. And you will be unmuted. Please raise your hand via the zoom function. And Mr. Schatz will unmute you. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to under 18 minutes.
We have a Stephanie Q.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk, Mr. Schatz will unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment that I'm, I'm really surprised that these meetings continue to be not, the public is not allowed to. that these meetings continue to be, um, not, the public is not allowed to attend in person while the school committee is allowed to gather in person. It really doesn't make any sense to me. Um, and it's really unfortunate that you're not allowing the public to, to be engaged in the meetings. Um, so I certainly just want to make that comment. Um, and I hope that's going to change moving forward, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk. Do we have anyone else, Mr. Schatz?
We do not.
Do we have any other member of public that would like to speak?
Oh, we have a Christine Smith.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, Mr. Schatz has unmuted you.
Good evening. Can you hear me well?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Oh, great. So I just have, uh, actually three quick things for the school committee tonight. It's really late, so I'm going to be as concise as possible. My name is Christine Smith. I live in Bridgewater. Um, I wanted to let you know tonight that the, um, technology involved with hearing the school committee members was working really poorly. For those folks who were, um, speaking in the meeting tonight from individual offices or homes, the sound was perfect and easily, um, processed. But for those of you in the conference room, the echo and the masks and the distance from the microphone made it near impossible to hear the conversation that was happening. And it was just really unfortunate to sit through such a long meeting and miss, um, lots of the good stuff that was being said. So just some feedback for, um, the future. Um, the second thing I wanted to mention tonight was I, I, you know, I'm going to wait and see what the end product is with the withdrawal survey that the folks worked on. Um, I hope that there's a distinction in this process between a withdrawal form and a withdrawal survey. Um, as someone who's withdrawn students from the district, um, at the time, there was no physical place for me to let the district know, hey, by the way, I'm, um, moving my child to a different school. And I think that that is something that you should want to prompt me to do so that your, um, October enrollment numbers can be more precise. Um, and then part two to that, um, process would be, you know, the part where you're seeking feedback, you know, like, well, where are you going? What are you doing? You know, that's, that sort of thing. Um, and then just as a, um, point of conversation, you know, this is, it's wonderful that something new like this is happening in the district. It is a good way to gather data. But my opinion in listening to the conversations, and again, just for feedback, is it almost sounds like there's concern among the school committee that the data is scary. Um, and I think as educators, it's our responsibility to remember that data is powerful and good data, bad data, gray data, whatever data we can collect, it's always knowledgeable. Um, and so I'm glad that you're making this, um, you know, advancement. And I hope that whatever the data is that you collect, that you find value in it. Um, maybe not necessarily in the moment, but, you know, as someone earlier mentioned, down the line, it could prove very useful. Um, and the last thing I wanted to ask for, something I've been meaning to ask for for a long time, but I keep forgetting, um, and I'm old now, so I have to write things down. Um, but the budget presentation tonight was, you know, um, well done. And, you know, at this point in my volunteerism, I'm able to follow along and, you know, keep up with what's happening. But something that I always see missing from these reports, and I hope that it's easy enough to add in, um, is the historical data that goes with these budget presentations and also similarly to the October enrollment numbers. We always see what's happening today, but it would be so helpful to also see what happened last year, three years ago, and five years ago, just so that when we're looking at, um, you know, like when Mr. Swenson is asking for like, you know, we want this English teacher and this nurse, you know, can we look back five years from, you know, five years from today and say, you know, have we asked for a nurse before? You know, did we get a nurse? How many have we picked up over the last five years? You know, I just think it's easier to ask for improvements if we really truly understand the big picture rather than, than just the current snapshot. So, um, you know, as a citizen, I would love to see those kind of numbers when we do these kind of presentations. And that's everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
No, we do not.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, um, I will close public comment at ten sixteen. Um, thank you for your votes, um, members of the public, Ms. Quirk and Ms. Smith, um, for your comments. Um, last, uh, we have announcements. Our next regular monthly meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February sixteenth, 2022, at seven PM. Um, and Dr. Prudowski, do you have budget dates?
Uh, the next budget meeting will be February fourteenth. That's a Monday and then also on March seventh, we'll have a regular budget subcommittee. And our presentation to the full committee will be on March ninth. And, and then we have, again, we take any feedback on the twenty-first where we welcome input from the public, uh, and then we'll do the final vote, I believe is March thirtieth, at that school committee meeting. And then, of course, we always have to continue talking with the town to, you know, perhaps fine tune that as more information comes in from the state. So...
Thank you. Um, this concludes our regular school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our January twenty-sixth, twenty-two school committee meeting and reconvene to executive session at ten eighteen for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to litigation, children's health rights, when an open discussion may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the committee as per Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, three, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations or to conduct contract negotiations regarding the superintendent's contract with non-Canadian personnel, when an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee as per Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A two, to approve executive session minutes for Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-two, three, and we will not reconvene in open session.
So moved.
Session made by Mr. Murray, seconded by Mr. Dolan. Mrs. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Florence?
Aye.
Mrs. Holbrook? Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Dr. Prudowski?
Aye.
And the chair will side motion back. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.